Good day that you need, you do one of that close in like thirty seconds.
Well, you know, when is your family, you got to do.
That's right.
My sister said she saw you today.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
She said I saw, yeah, she said we saw you today. She said he was dressed style up. I said he had on his lawyer in clothes.
That's right, that's right. You're doing the invocation. Speaking of, I need to get, I'm gonna get you and my Taylors, you gotta, you gotta talk to her. She comes to my office and measures me. There's a way to do it cheap.
Good evening and welcome to the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners special called zoning public hearing. The time is six P M. And I would request that everybody please silence your cell phones and all electronic devices. And I hereby call the Spalding County Meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Gwen Flowers Taylor to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Bolden, Ryan Bolden, to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
If you will join me, please. I ask you to join me in taking a moment of silence, asking God to protect and be with those families that were damaged or injured in the most recent tornadic weather event. We ask you to be with them, to help continue to provide for them and for their families, and to be a safe haven for them as they try to recover from this weather event. Father, we come to you this evening in gratitude, just thanking you for allowing us to be here today. Some people didn't wake up today, and we know that we are blessed that we are here. We ask you to be in this room tonight. We ask you to help us to, to make decisions that are going to be the best for, for this county. We ask you to grant us wisdom, discernment, patience, and understanding as we go through these proceedings. And we ask you, Father, for us to handle this business in a way that is pleasing to you. We ask all of these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening and thank you all for coming out. This is going to be a rather lengthy session. Most of us here have brought our sleeping bags to be prepared for all this that's gonna happen. So we're excited about having an opportunity to see and listen to so many of our citizens. We'd like to now proceed to the public hearing. Persons desiring to speak must sign up in the appropriate application. When called, speakers must state your names, addresses, and direct all comments to the board only. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters being considered by the Board of Commissioners on this agenda. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audiences will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected during, throughout the meeting. There will be a clock that says three minutes when it comes up there, so you'll know when your timing, time is up. Do I have a motion to enter into public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion actually to amend the agenda to include an item that would be a, instilling a moratorium on new building developments until the new building and zoning code is in place.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Three, two, motion does not carry. Item number, now, do I have a motion to, excuse me, I have a motion to a public hearing?
Summons.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five, zero, we're in, now in a public hearing.
County manager, would you start reading?
I would be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will begin the proposed text, we will begin with the proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four, Zoning, Article Two, Section Two Zero Two, adding various definitions of solar energy systems. Additionally, we will consider amendments adding various solar energy system principle and accessory uses to permitted uses, Sections five oh three, six oh three, six oh four A, seven zero three, seven zero three A, eight zero three, eight zero three A, nine zero three, one zero zero three, eleven oh three, eleven oh three A, twelve oh three, thirteen oh three, fourteen oh three, fourteen oh three A, fifteen oh three, seventeen oh three A, seventeen oh three B, eighteen oh three, nineteen oh three, twenty-two oh five B, and twenty-two oh three C Charlie.
So if everybody understands two things. One, what you're seeing on the screen over here on your right is exactly what we're seeing in front of us. So there's code transparency on that. Secondly, we spent a couple of hours earlier today going over each one of these and asking questions until we had the resolution. So for us, some of these are second issues, or third time we've talked about them that we're gonna vote on tonight. Do I have a motion to approve?
This is public hearing, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have two individuals who have signed up for public hearing this evening on the text amendment. Mr. Bill Potter, if you would, please step forward to the podium here. State your name and address for the record for a three-minute discussion.
And this is for the?
This is for the text amendment.
For the solar?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hi, my name's Bill Potter. Address, house is being built now, it's at five two two nine West Ellis Road, Griffin, three oh two two three. I've been, to give you a little background, I mean, I started doing solar back in two thousand two, and I installed my last solar system back in two thousand eighteen, before I moved to Georgia. So I'm aware of the ordinances, the laws, and everything else with regards to solar systems. And I want to, I don't, I don't see him here today, Mr. Allen. I have, oh, I want to thank you for all your, to listening to our concerns and, and all of your changes. I give him ten stars, okay? I mean, he's been great. I saw the update last night, and the issue, as I mentioned to Mr. Allen, is the square footage. When I first started, solar panels were, were small. But solar panels now, if you're looking at anything in the five hundred watts range, they are approximately six feet, eight inches tall, four feet wide. And if you were to calculate the size of, of those solar panels, each one is twenty-five point five square feet. Multiply that by twenty, it's zero, five hundred and ten square feet. So if you're, I could not use twenty solar panels because I've gone over to square footage. And I've mentioned this many times, is that, you know, have, having a limit limits the customer's ability to produce the power they need. When I installed systems, the only thing that, that barred me was the amount they, they needed. If they needed five kilowatts, I had to put on five kilowatts. If they needed twenty kilowatts, I put on twenty kilowatts. Technology has changed so much today that the house that I'm building, I was hoping to put half of its use on a battery backup system and half with utility. It's a fifteen kilowatt system, and no matter how I design it and with the panels, I need thirty-seven solar panels. My, I, I have an A R one, and I have fifty acres. And I noticed that with regards to how it's worded, an A R one with a ground mount system is considered, let me just get the right terminology here, how you have it written. It is considered a yard scale. I don't know how fifty acres is considered a yard.
No, I'm sorry, that's, your three minutes is up.
What is?
Yes.
Wow, that sure went past. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Doctor Libiter, when we spoke about this earlier at the workshop, there was discussion about the sizes. Didn't, didn't we go with essentially up to one hundred and twenty-five percent of what the household needs is? Wasn't that what the measurement was?
What I said was in, excuse me, Commissioner, what I said was that in Georgia power, if you're generating for purposes of use on your property and you use that generation, you are limited to one hundred and twenty-five percent of peak load.
Right, so I mean, but it's not a square foot, it's a?
It's not tied to square footage, it's tied to peak load. I do not know what an EMC, each EMC is different, and they're not regulated. So there could be different restrictions depending upon which EMC is applicable. And I'm assuming that Mr. Potter's on EMC.
But, but our rule that we're talking about here is gonna go by the amount that's generated, and that's relative, like, the cap would be relative to the energy needs of the individual residence house, right?
Generally would be, let me pull up.
Other than the things that need a special exception, like the small, maybe even the large, like farms, right?
If he's a ground-mounted system in an A R zone, he can have, a small scale is a footprint of one to five acres of panels.
But even that would, that requires a special exception, right? Because it's a small scale. But without that special exception, he can still ground mount in the backyard, if it's less than an acre, up to the one hundred and twenty-five percent of peak load for his house, no matter what size that is. And then if it's under five acres, it's side or backyard, right, up to one hundred and twenty-five. It's not like a square footage, it's a?
Commissioner, we don't adopt the one hundred and twenty-five percent of peak load. I was just giving that as an example of what is in the Georgia power tariff.
So what's, what's the restriction on the amount that, of panels that could go in? Should this be maybe?
It's, um, sorry, let me get the word in here.
So we are, so we are doing a square footage?
Twenty panels or a maximum of five hundred square feet. That's correct.
He makes a good point. All right, that was my question. Sorry.
Right, next up is Kathleen Burns.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Burns at fifty-four fifty-one West McIntosh Road. I am speaking on behalf of my husband Greg Burns. He has been looking forward to the solar ordinance discussion ever since the first time it was on the agenda back in January. He very much wanted to come to this meeting but could not come at the rescheduled time. First, Greg wanted to thank David Allen and the staff in the Community Development Office for considering his suggestions to the proposed ordinance, which have been included in your agenda packet. A positive outcome of the rescheduled meeting has been the opportunity for further refinements in the proposed text. The text now makes rooftop solar straightforward for the citizens of Spalding County. No street-facing or kilowatt or acreage limitations. These are all positive steps towards energy independence. The only remaining question is what the appropriate limit for ground mounts should be, which Bill Potter has addressed. We strongly support the county allowing residents to take steps towards energy independence and urge you to approve the solar ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen. Flower, is there somebody else to?
No, sir, not for that particular item.
Just so everybody has a flavor for how this works, the great county manager is here. The next five are commissioners. Then you see the Director of Community Development and then our zoning attorney over there. So when you hear people talking, if you're not familiar with who they are, that's who everybody is and how we'll move through this, all right?
Next up, application twenty-five zero one Z and twenty-five zero one V. Application twenty-five zero one Z, Mark Anderson, owner, twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot two two six of the Third Land District. Parcel number two one two zero one zero zero seven B, consisting of two point two two acres. The applicant is requesting to rezon from R two, single-family residential, to A R one agricultural residential to be able to use the property for more agricultural purposes, more specifically beekeeping and cultivation. Application twenty-five zero one V, Mark Anderson, owner, twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot two two six of the Third Land District. Parcel number two one two zero one zero zero seven B, consisting of two point two two acres. The applicant is requesting a variance in land, oh, sorry, in lot size due to rezoning. First up, Mr. Chair, is Mark Anderson. If you would, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Mark Anderson, I'm at twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, that place. And I certainly don't object. So basically, just wanted to come up here if you guys had any questions about, you know, anything like that that we're trying to do. I know from the, the planning session that we were at last time, one of the things they mentioned was obviously not having a roadside stand, which, if you've been on Jackson Road, that would tantamount to suicide. So, anyway, but we bought the house about two years ago. The reason why we actually bought that one, we wanted to move out to the country to be more, more country and less in the city, was, it turns out, we found that I'm distantly related to the builders of that home in eighteen fifty-three. So kinda automatically got a little bit of a connection to the Hamill family. My father's name is Hamill Anderson, and so you have to go back to Scotland, but, you know, it's a distant relation. But, so anyway, so we wanted to take it under our, our, you know, ability to kinda restore that home. And beekeeping is one of the things that we like to do as well. So we wanted to be able to incorporate that into the community as well, just because it's the natural and, you know, health benefits to buy honey and products that are made from honey in your local community, so. But if you have any questions, just wanted to?
And since he's the applicant, we can ask him questions, right? Like, most people who sign up, we can't, it's not a question and answer, but because he's the applicant, we can, right?
No, not only when we're, during the?
Correct.
Application.
Yeah, when we get to the new business, we will bring him back up to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
We could ask him questions or something like that.
Yeah, next time, yes.
Mr. Chair, next up on the agenda is application twenty-four zero three S, Stuart Voice, Woodland Church, twenty-two ninety and twenty-three hundred North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Approximately one hundred thirty-two point two five total acres, located in Land Lot one eleven of the Second Land District. Parcel numbers two zero four zero one zero zero one and two zero four zero one zero two zero. The applicant is seeking a special exception to develop a religious campground per section five zero three B one five of the Spalding County Code of Ordinances. Up for discussion this evening is Ms. Kay Wimpy. If you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kay Wimpy. I live at one sixty-four South Walkersville Road. I just have some concerns about this development. I know recently that y'all approved for them to build like ten stick buildings, and that they could come back and ask for some more. So it then sounds like instead of becoming a religious campground, it's becoming, they're a tiny house, mini trailer, or rental community. I'd like to know, is there a limit to a fourteen-day stay? I know there was some discussion about the Mount Zion Church that has their religious campground. And that campground is building sponsored by Methodist churches. So it's not like places where people go to live and they do events out there. So are we limiting this, that people can stay at this community religious campground only when there are events at this church? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
Mr. Chair, next up is application twenty-four thirty-two Z, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr. at Owl. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres, located in Land Lot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the Second Land District. Parcel numbers two zero one zero one zero zero one, two zero one zero one zero zero one A, two zero one zero one zero zero one B, two zero one zero one zero zero one D, two zero 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 one zero zero one, two zero 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 one zero zero six, two zero 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 one zero zero one B, and two zero one zero one zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R two to A R two to Villa, sorry, R two and A R two to Village Node District. Application twenty-four thirty-one S, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr. at Owl. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres, located in Land Lot one forty-seven of the Second Land District. Parcel number two zero one zero one zero zero one D. The applicant is requesting special exception for an age-targeted, age fifty-five and older living facility to be permitted, possibly including independent living facility, assisted living facility, personal care home, nursing home, or senior's apartment, which shall be subject to a maximum height limitation of sixty feet with an approved fire sprinkler system. Application twenty-four one three V B, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr. at Owl. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres, located in Land Lot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the Second Land District. Parcel numbers two zero one zero one zero zero one, two zero one zero one zero zero one A, two zero one zero one zero zero one B, two zero one zero one zero zero one D, two zero 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 one zero zero one, two zero 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 one zero zero six, two zero 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 one zero zero one B, and two zero one zero one zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a mag, sorry, a minimum single-family house size of twelve hundred square feet if the dwellings are age-targeted for individuals age fifty-five and older. Application twenty-four one three V D, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr. at Owl. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia. Approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres, located in Land Lot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the Second Land District. Parcel numbers two zero one zero one zero zero one, two zero one zero one zero zero one A, two zero one zero one zero zero one B, two zero one zero one zero zero one D, two zero 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 one zero zero one, two zero 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 one zero zero six, two zero 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 one zero zero one B, and two zero one zero one zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a minimum single-family lot frontage and lot width of forty feet in the dwellings are, if the, if the dwellings are age-targeted for individuals age fifty-five and older. First on the list this evening for discussion is Daniel Gilbert. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Daniel Gilbert, eleven twenty-one Amelia Road. I'd like to specifically address the variances that are being requested on Amelia Road. According to the county's ordinance, a variance can only be granted when an unnecessary hardship would result if a particular piece of property cannot reasonably be used under existing requirements. I'd like to ask you, what is the hardship that calls for houses to be built on forty-foot lots and more than four to an acre in an area where it's clearly, clearly out of place? The ordinance states that a variance may not be granted based on prospective sales or an expressed economic need. At the second zoning meeting, Minerva made the claim that the need for affordable housing for fifty-five and over population was a hardship. A claim of hardship for a hypothetical group of fifty-five and over people that need affordable housing in an area where multiple such communities are already under development within five minutes is not a hardship. In the agenda packet for the previous meeting, they got canceled. It was a claim of hardship in that document was that it would decrease the lot yield. How was that a hardship? Who was that a hardship for? Another claim is that the fifty-five demographic typically desire smaller homes and yards. Wanting less of a yard to take care of is not hardship. If there was a real unnecessary hardship, there would have been a clear, concise, and consistent definition of that hardship from the beginning of these proceedings. In two thousand and sixteen, my dad was denied a variance to build a second house on this fifteen-acre parcel on Amelia Road right across from where this is being proposed for my grandmother. The reason being is it would set a precedent that would have a negative impact on the area, and it would complicate the street number. So my question for you is, are you gonna give those with money and influence the same treatment as those that don't? What kind of precedent will approval of this project set? The local citizens are gonna be denied the kind of use of their property that they see fit for them, that best suits their interest? Is it gonna set the precedent that we're gonna bring out the rubber stamp when a developer comes dangling millions of dollars in potential tax revenue? Will approval of this project set a precedent that will allow Minerva to completely take over our area, the county, through their sewer? Also, according to the ordinance, approval of a variance must not cause detriment to the public good. The Henry County Water Authority stated in the D R I for this project that there was clear negative, there would be a clear negative influence on vital resources in the area. Amelia Road is already a narrow and unpaved road, and it's so dangerous that the county has took efforts to limit traffic on it. So what is hundreds of more vehicles added to this road gonna do for public safety? Not to mention the trucks coming in, bringing materials for years. So the bottom line is, this property can be reasonably developed without a variance and have much less impact on water resources, quality of life, and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Michelle Drew-Goss?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Drew-Goss, three twelve Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia, Sun City Peachtree. Minerva's Community Services Wastewater Treatment Plant is located in the heart of Sun City Peachtree and serves the current nineteen-hundred-plus homes already built, and will serve the additional twelve-hundred homes proposed to be built with, with possible assisted living and commercial area in the Toa Lega Village Node. The wastewater treatment plant services a current portion of Heron Bay Golf and Country Club and will be adding a minimum of three hundred and six more homes to the system. Grayson Park is utilizing the Minerva wastewater treatment system, and will have a hundred and nineteen homes and a hundred townhomes on the system. Team in Point has broken ground and will add two hundred and ninety-three cluster homes to the treatment system. The Sun City Plaza and Minerva Spring Lake proposed developments will also be added when they are approved to build. Includes a large retail commercial property, a hundred and forty-nine single-family homes and assisted living center, and two hundred and sixteen equal rental cottages have been proposed across from and next to Sun City Peachtree. The capacity of the wastewater treatment plant is supposed to be approximately seventy-five hundred homes. But Sun City Peachtree is already being inundated by a terrible stench from the current use, a smell that makes you gag right in the center of Sun City Peachtree. And it is not just Sun City Peachtree that smells the stench. I've been contacted by the neighborhoods and homes that adjoin Sun City Peachtree, who are also experiencing the horrible stench. Even on the coldest day this year, the Sun City Peachtree residents could smell the stench. What will it be like when the community, if Minerva adds more to the system? Septic trucks come into Sun City Peachtree and suck up the sludge and drive it to the field right next door to Sun City Peachtree and spread it there? What will it be like when there's seven, seventy-five hundred homes on the system? What will this do to the health of the seniors living in Sun City Peachtree? Minerva added the sewers to the northeast section, not out of the goodness of their hearts, but to ensure that Minerva could apply for the variances and special exceptions to propose cluster home developments. It's all about the money. Minerva is a private sewer system, and Minerva can charge whatever fee they choose. The current fee is seventy dollars and eleven cents before we even use one drop of water. Commissioners, there are already forty-two hundred homes in the pipeline to be built in District Five. It is time for a moratorium until you can see the effects these new homes will have on the water system, the roads, the schools, and the complete infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Pat Peterson?
My name is Lee Peterson. I live on Amelia Road, eleven oh five Amelia Road. And I, you know, I just wanna say, how many of you have been down on Amelia Road? Okay, Amelia Road, everybody down there has at least three acres. One way, three acres the other way, some more than three acres. And you can, you can go from Spalding County to? And you can, you can go from Spalding County into Henry County down the same street, and they have two to three acres. And we wanna take and put a fifty-five community right in the middle of it, which these homes will not even have an acre, not even an acre. They're gonna be small homes for people in there, and you're gonna put this right in the middle of all of us who have acreage. And not even considering, if you say you represent us, you're not even considering what we have. If you represented us, you would say to this man here, you would say, hey, we can't even start unless you're thinking about putting homes in there to have at least two or three acres. I, I mean, put yourself in my place, you know? I bought this land a long time ago from Mr. Wilson. He worked for the county, and he, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have anything to do. He, he said it's gonna be at least, he sold lots at three to six acres down there. And we, we came out there to the country because we love the country. Now, I'm just gonna tell you something, even down there, you know, coming here on Jackson Road McDonough, that the traffic's backed all the way up to the B and P gas station at times when people are coming home and stuff like that. And do you know that down one fifty-five in Henry County, probably about two or three miles from my home, they built twelve big condos right next to all these, what you wanna say, uh, workplaces that they're building? And they keep building more and more and more and more. We don't even got, we, I mean, we got two lanes going down one fifty-five, and that traffic is, is bad to begin with. Even, even McDonough, you can't, you can't, uh, just, you can't even go past two o'clock in the afternoon before traffic just in, encases you. At least in, in this, in this county, at least you could, you can go to Griffin, come back, and still the normal time. But, you know, it, it's just that, that, you know, you gotta think of us. Isn't, this isn't just about building more and more money for, for y'all, you know what I mean? Because you represent us. We actually pay your salary. You wouldn't have a job if it wasn't for us. And just saying, we want people who represent us. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Don Lover, isn't it, isn't it true that for, we, that we did that study with Georgia Tech that said that for every dollar that we collect in residential property taxes, that we actually spend a dollar and sixteen cent to provide those residents with, uh, county services?
Yes, sir. That study was, uh, conducted for Effingham County. Julie Robinson?
Julie Robinson, Amelia Road. I am here to ask our commissioners to vote no for the rezoning and the variances today. You have heard an abundance of evidence earlier today and for many weeks of the reasons why our, our district, our community does not want this. But more importantly, I, we, we are asking our commissioners to stand up for us, to not be afraid to say no. No matter what a big developer says they may or may not do, we expect y'all to fight for us, and we have made it clear that District Five does not want this development. And I feel, and all of us feel, that our community and our county is worth fighting for, whatever the consequences may be. I am also standing here asking for a moratorium on all further building. It has been openly admitted that our codes are so out of date, they're antiquated. That is why we will continue to have developers come and build things in our county that we clearly do not want because they can, 'cause they're checking boxes with the dep, with the zoning department because we have weak codes. I am also asking for a complete revision of the comprehensive plan, 'cause clearly, looking deep into the, to the steering committee, that District Five was well underrepresented. And in that rep, in that plan, all of these things that are not wanted anywhere else in the county were dumped in, in District Five. And so we want this completely redone. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Bob Budron, Budron?
Uh, this, uh, Bob Bodron from fourteen hundred Birdie Road, Griffin. And, uh, I don't live in this area where these developments are planned, but I pass through here all the time, and the traffic is already really bad. You have to check the cell phone navigator to see if you can even use the intersection at Jackson Road one fifty-five, or if you need to detour and go way out of the way. I suspect you're gonna hear a lot about traffic tonight, and also about the rural lifestyle, way of life. These people who live in this area bought these houses on multiple acres and expected it to stay that way, expected those houses to be there for the next generation possibly. And this rezoning opens up a precedent to just totally change the whole nature of the area. And I, I'm sure you're gonna hear a lot of people aren't in favor of that tonight, too. Uh, certainly, I think, once you, if you make this change, it opens the, the door, and it'll never be brought back. So, I sure hope you hesitate and think this over and look at preserving the way of life that these people are used to here in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sharon Cloud?
Good evening, Sharon Cloud, uh, Bass Circle, Jackson, Georgia. I represent over ten point six petitioners and one point two thousand active members of a community committed to protecting the Toa Laga watershed. The High Falls Toa Laga Watershed Alliance is a nonprofit organization that was started in two thousand and four. North Toa Laga Village development will have a direct impact on the Toa Laga River, but that impact will continue for over fifty miles, all the way to Juliet, Georgia, where it joins the Al Mulgee. According to a recent estimate by the Nature Conservancy, for every inch of rainfall, a single acre of impervious surface can create twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty gallons of runoff. The cumulative effect of the rapid growth in Henry Spalding and Butts is overwhelming the river. The four hundred and sixty-four point five acres of mostly impervious surface will result in over thirteen million gallons of stormwater runoff per inch of rain. This can easily overwhelm a well-intended effort to build systems to contain and control it. Unpaved ground absorbs rainfall, uh, allowing water to soak naturally into the soil where it's filtered of pollutants and gradually makes its way to aquifers. Paved surfaces disrupt this process, altering nat, natural drainage patterns, leading to increased volume and spread of surface runoff, diminishing groundwater recharge and rapid and intense stream flow during periods of heavy rain causing erosion and more frequent and severe flooding. As part of our mission, we have been certified by the State of Georgia's Adopted Stream Program to test both chemical and biological contaminants. We have already started testing at Tressley Road below the Cold Dam and will be adding additional sites in Henry Spalding and Butts County. In nineteen ninety-four, approximately nine inches of rain fell in this region within three days. The High Falls Dam failed. As a result, a man lost his life when his truck was washed off Highway eighty-three Bridge near Juliet, over ten miles below the dam. This development is approximately thirteen miles north of that dam that was built in eighteen ninety. We cannot stress enough our concern, as well as our desire to work with you to minimize the impact of this development on our watershed, especially the increased flood risk on the citizens downstream. Just think of how close Hurricane Helene came to impacting our community. So with that in mind, please think about our watershed and the potential severe consequences of your decision. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak about our concerns.
Thank you, Sharon. Tim Meeler?
Hi, my name's Tim Meeler. I live at forty-two Apple Road. Uh, my wife and I bought, uh, this land thirty-two and a half years ago from Standard Properties, uh, who represented the Wilsons. One of the stipulations of buying the standard, uh, buying the pro, the property from Standard Properties that we had to purchase five acres or more. We purchased five acres at forty-two Apple Road. Uh, we lived in Marrow at the time until our land was paid off and our house was built. My wife and I wanted to get away from the poorly constructed houses and small yards. We wanted a few acres of land to bring up our future child for generations to come. We wanted peace and quiet with nature to surround our family. We didn't want the house, we didn't want our house to be so close, uh, to our neighbors or for our neighbors to hear everything we s, we said and did. Uh, we lived at forty-two Apple Road for twenty, it's now thirty years. Uh, we have, we still have peace, the surrounding nature, the quietness, and plus, we have the wonderful neighbors that, uh, are not in, uh, at arm's length, but close enough to borrow a cup of sugar, lend a helping hand if we needed. The people who live in our quaint neighborhood are like an extended family to us. We take care of one another. We have built a community that to be proud of and want to protect. Most everyone who lives on Sam Solomon, Apple, Amelia, and Luella Road have at least five acres or more. Many of our neighbors own cows, pigs, turkeys, horses, goats, chickens, donkeys, rabbits, dogs, and cats. Most of the neighbors who live in, uh, our community, uh, where the neighbors look out for one another. High-density growth takes away, takes that away. It is nice to be able to walk down our dirt road and not feel scared. We don't have a, a lot of traffic except on Amelia and Luella Roads when seventy-five north and south are bumper to bumper. The roads in our neighborhood are dirt or triple-coated, but they're not anymore. Uh, the roads are not suitable for high traffic. Our little area and the area around Highway one fifty-five towards Griffin is not ready for high-density growth. The roads will not handle that kind of growth. Minerva wants to build, uh, fifty-five-plus high-density homes on Amelia Road and several homes in front of, in the front that have acreage which will destroy the small neighborhood feel, not to mention the peaceful sound of nature and quietness from the hustle and bustle and the craziness that goes out on one fifty-five and Bill Gardner Parkway. Traffic growing up and down Amelia Road and Luella Road will destroy this area. Minerva also wants to build one thousand-plus homes and developments, uh, is allowing to be built. The safety of the people in this area will become a huge problem. We have researched and found out that there are only two ambulances allotted to our area which are privately owned by Wellstar Spalding Hospital. Don't spend any time there. From what we have experienced, it takes thirty-five-plus minutes for an ambulance to get to our neighborhood. We have two sheriffs that service our area, which often takes hours before they are able to reach us. We do not have fire hydrants. You should've heard the rest of it.
Samuel Weeks?
My name's Samuel Weeks. I live on one hundred Mimosa Road, which is right off Jackson Road. I own sixty-five acres there. Um, I have, uh, lived there for fourteen years. However, I was also born in Spalding County, and I recently retired from active-duty military, and I was looking for a place to live, to bring my kids up. And I found that, found that lovely place out there in the middle of the country and decided to buy that. And so, because I was in the active-duty military, I've lived all over the world. I've lived all over the state, and I've lived all over other states. And I can tell you, the way Spalding County is now is the way Spalding County really should stay. It should have some agriculture, it should have some housing, but it should not be packed like Henry County. Because of where I live at is right close to Henry County, and they have destroyed all the trees on this, all the way on LG Griffin Road, all the way up to the county line. And they just keep packing more and more houses. I understand industry is being built right there on Jackson Road. However, I can tell you right now, Jackson Road, even though it's not supposed to have through trucks, has eighteen-wheelers going down that road all the time. The road has more potholes than it has asphalt. And the intersection of one fifty-five McDonough Road and Jackson needs a roundabout or it needs something, and that's before we talk about all this. So if you wanna bring in three thousand more cars with all that house and all that land destroyed, I don't think that's what Spalding County is, and that's not a place that I would like to live. So I ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Michelle Knight?
Hello, Michelle Knight, eleven eleven Skyline Drive. Um, I do not live, um, near this community. I actually live in the city. Um, but I was on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan, so when Julie, um, brought that up, I wanted, I wanna look at everyone that's in opposition to this and let y'all know that when we were asked, um, I've been a lifelong resident of Spalding County, and I made it very clear, we need to quit carving up our agricultural land. Stay away from the west side, stay away from the east side. You can move south if you need to, but these cluster communities are wrong for our community. Sun City is beautifully done. It has, um, homeowners association that's very strong, um, but doing this to this beautiful land and to the people that have moved in this area to flee, like the growth in Henry County and Clayton County, it's like you're pulling the rug out for my room. I think it's wrong to think that, um, to target, that's gonna target fifty-five and up, that these families won't have kids. I don't know if there's a plan in place to keep people from having kids in the homes like they do at Sun City. Uh, but I can tell you, in December, I will be fifty-five, and I will still have two kids in the school system. So if you think that, and these are my kids, they're not my grandkids, but there are a lot of people that still raise their grandkids. So now you're gonna talk about bringing in twelve-hundred homes, and maybe half of them have kids still in the homes? Now look at the impact on the school system. Now you can't even find bus drivers. How are you gonna have to have buses for this whole new community? Um, I think the traffic impact on one fifty-five's already horrible. You can't, there's really no time that you can try to go to, um, Locust Grove or Coles or anywhere in that area without traffic on one fifty-five. And then Spalding County has a horrible track record of building communities. Look at Waterford on Ellis, Coldwater Creek. They always start out beautiful, and then somewhere down the line, it stops, and then they come in and build crap homes. Like the ordinances, um, or the requirements, building zones, whatever, needs to be updated to where things actually look really nice. And so I would ask that y'all, um, place a moratorium on this until y'all can come up with better building codes, um, and or just say no altogether. Thank you.
Samantha Langston?
Hello, my name is Samantha Langston, two four two three North McDonough Road. We respectfully ask that you deny the request for rezoning to Village Node and instead support responsible development under the current zoning for several reasons. First, the Village Node District requires direct access from a state highway or a county collector's street, but Public Works confirms that Amelia Road is a local road, not a county collector. The zoning also emphasizes pedestrian-friendly access, yet there is no crosswalk or safe pedestrian plan for residents on Highway one fifty-five to reach the commercial areas. Without this, the Village Node zoning is fundamentally flawed. Beyond zoning mismatches, the land presents significant environmental concerns, including wetlands conference conservation, groundwater recharge, water quality, and food risks. While technically within a designated Village Node area, this land is not suitable for the high-density and zoning requi, the zoning requires. Not every parcel within a mapped area fits its designated use. This is a clear example. Additionally, we urge the county to pause further Village Node approvals until we evaluate if this model even works in Spalding County. Harren Bay still struggles with vacant retail after twenty years. Sun City's commercial development has yet to materialize since two thousand and seven. Grayson Park lacks its promised commercial elements. Before approving more, we should first ensure existing developments are successful. Minerva may have interest from businesses, but past nodes have yet to deliver. We've also spoken with residents in Village Node areas like Grayson Park who already face the issues that we fear: poor roads, rising taxes despite a growing tax base, increased crime, and neglected land owned by Minerva's affiliate, Cold Tract, which has become a dumping ground. These concerns directly impact local waterways and public property. While Minerva didn't develop that project, they own the land during the zoning approvals. Lastly, we oppose reducing the variance from fifty feet to forty feet. Lot yield is not a hardship that justifies an exemption, an exception. The developer initially downplayed the change, then later claimed it was necessary for affordable housing, despite repeatedly stating that this project was not intended for affordable homes in Spalding County. We urge you to consider these concerns and vote no on Village Node rezoning. Instead, we ask for responsible, lower-density growth that aligns with the updated zoning standards. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Karen Stone?
Hi, I'm Karen Stone. I live at eight-twenty Amelia Road. Um, my husband and I moved here five years ago after serving in the military. Um, and we moved here instead of, even though his job is in Atlanta, we moved to Spalding because we could live a semi-rural lifestyle. And that's what we've got. We don't, we still don't have all the amenities we'd like, which would be like a fire department close by, an ambulance, things like that, but we're semi-rural. Um, so, and that's what we'd like to keep. For, okay. So, um, several of my neighbors, including my, and myself, have called for an ambulance for emergencies. We've gotten thirty-five minutes to an hour. My particular one was fifty minutes. Um, I know somebody else who waited fifty-five minutes for a heart attack. You can't tell me that the infrastructure is there for this development. It isn't. You do have a concern there. You have a big concern. Somebody had a fire, another neighbor. They had to rely on their neighbors to put the fire out. The infrastructure's not there to help them. You know, all about the road, I'm sure. Everybody's already mentioned it, I'm not going to even bother. Our, our mail truck that comes from Locust Grove is the one taking the biggest hit. I've seen it in the ditch three times. So, um, the, going from R-two to village node, leave, the village node leaves a huge opening. They can do anything they want, basically, there. But there's no need to go further than R-two, in my opinion. And you'd have to agree, what it, what it, what do we need three houses in an acre for? What? The only people that benefit from that is Minerva. None, with the tax base that that's going to provide, you have to provide a lot more infrastructure. I can't remember what else I was going to talk about. My husband was supposed to talk about the sewer. The sewer monopoly in this town is crazy. You guys have got to do something about that. They, um, I don't know if we need a whole new sewer system to get away from theirs or what we need to do, but something's got to be done. I don't see any future development that would make sense with that sewer system. Thank you very much.
I'm going to guess at this name, so please forgive me. Dan Dodson? Is that correct? Thank you, sir.
I'm eighty-three years old and I've seen this fight before. I grew up in downtown, not downtown, but suburban Dallas.
Mr. Dodson, where did you address?
Texas.
Sorry, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Dan Dodson, six-forty-two, Brook Circle, Griffin.
Okay.
Uh, my dad was a member of a city planning commission in Dallas, in a Dallas suburb. I learned at an early age that there's a natural law that pits the interest of high-density developers against the men, the members of a community. High-density development reduces the access of the community to infrastructure and community services. It's always going to happen. There's always going to be a profit motive that wants to seek something for nothing from the community. So thank you for the democratic process, which is the only way you can stop this.
Thank you, Dan. Brenda Martin?
Hi, my name is Brenda Martin. I live on Apple Road in Locust Grove. Um, I'm actually reading this from my husband, who is upset he can't be here because he's sick. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opposition to request for rezoning to village node. I would like to start by saying that I'm not opposed to growth in progress, but it must be very well-planned, responsible growth and development. A main concern for my family is for those who have no say in the matter, our abundant wildlife. This is a very delicate issue. Because of their nesting, mating, hunting, food and water sources in our area, they must be protected. The high-density area that is proposed will be very detrimental to our wildlife. I feel strongly that the best solution for the residents and our wildlife is to leave the existing zoning in place, continue to provide the opportunity for more many-formic residences, which keeps our rural community as we enjoy it now and a better outcome for long-term residents. Thank you very much.
Amanda Gilbert?
Hi, I'm Amanda Gilbert, um, one-one-two-one, Amelia Road. Um, I live actually right next door to, on Amelia Road and across the street from the fifty-five, um, community. I attended Mr. Davison's first community meeting, um, with concerns about my children, um, because our family lake is downstream of streams where this community is going to be and we swim there. I was concerned about our well water and so were so many of our neighbors and they asked the same questions at the meeting. Um, we were met with vague assurances, like it shouldn't affect it. Um, we were told to, that Henry County has a really strong water ordinance and that Spalding largely follows it. Um, but no real explanation was given, um, that, like, it wasn't talked to, like, this is what we're going to do. Um, so I had to go and do some research on my own and instead of being assured by that, we came up with more concerns, um, like how in two thousand seventeen, the comprehensive goal, um, plan was to permanently preserve groundwater recharge areas permanently. But then suddenly in two thousand twenty-two, that, um, the groundwater recharge area isn't there and instead of our, our one of three groundwater recharge areas in, um, this area is on this parcel, that was taken out and instead it was put in as the village center, which I think was a very, um, high degree of planning, um, to make a, a specific parcel instead of approximate area before going through the planning and zoning process, which I feel like that kind of takes away from the power of it. Um, we, there was water critical lands, there's watershed. Um, we saw that Henry County Water Authority had, uh, made strong recommendations to follow their guidelines, which is what, uh, Mr. Davison said was really strong guidelines, but now, um, he doesn't want to follow them. Um, so we were also concerned about the not being a future trustee. Um, the December letter to the commissioners mentions that they would probably do the Water Authority for Spalding County and two weeks ago, we met with Mr. Davison and he said it would probably be the Water Authority, but as of Monday, they still hadn't heard from him. Um, so we don't know. Um, we know, I think it was January of last year when the county was talking about trying to be removed then. And so that's like a whole year that they still have not looked into a new trustee. So that was concerning. Um, we've made many concerns. Um, we were met with dismissiveness and really even demeaning comments. Um, we've been told throughout this process about, um, um, that how the Wilsons used to own the land. He didn't own my, my family's land. Um, and even if he did, um, it doesn't matter who owned your land in the past. Now, I want to say this really quick. Uh, Mr. Uh, Davison has threatened to put manufactured mobile homes or manufactured duplexes if he does R-two zoning. That was an error in the code. Um, it's another reason why we should have a moratorium for the ordinance.
Denise Parrish?
Hi, my name's Denise Parrish. I own six-and-a-half acres on eight-ninety-five Amelia Road. Eight-ninety-five Amelia Road? Good evening, commissioners. I stand before you today to urge you to reject this rezoning request. The hardship claimed in this request is based on the need for more housing, but the numbers tell a different story. Taxes in our county come from three primary sources, residential, manufacturing and commercial. A well-balanced tax structure ensures that residential properties do not disproportionately bear the financial burden of maintaining county services. The ideal balance for these three categories sets residential properties at sixty-five percent. However, Spalding County is already at eighty-six percent residential, far beyond the sustainable threshold. We don't need to pack in more bodies to fill a quota. What we need is responsible growth. Growth that strengthens our economy, not burdens it. For every one dollar collected in residential taxes, the county spends a dollar fifteen on services. This means that approving more housing accelerates financial strain, not alleviates it. Adding more residents will not solve the problem. Many resi- many residents already commute out of town for work and spend their money elsewhere. Adding more rooftops won't change this. It will only increase the number of people doing the same thing. Instead, we should encourage high-value housing that attracts residents who will invest in our community, support local businesses and contribute to job creation. Let's be absolutely clear, this developer can already build homes under the current zoning. They're not requesting this rezoning because they need to develop the land. They're requesting it because higher-density development maximizes their profit at the community's expense. If they were truly concerned about housing, they'd develop with the existing zoning. Instead, they want to increase density, knowing full well that it will push Spalding further into unsustainable structure. Your own comprehensive plan, page fifteen, states Spalding County will be a county of choice, thanks to well-timed targeted growth for housing and jobs, new services and amenities for enhancing our livability and vibrancy, and protection of the environmental, historic and rural charm that make our community unique. This request directly contradicts that vision. It's not targeted growth, it doesn't enhance livability and it doesn't protect what makes this county unique. If we continue approving short-sighted rezoning que- requests like this, the county becomes just another overcrowded, overtaxed area struggling to provide basic services. I urge you to consider who this truly benefits. Because it's not the residents of Spalding County, it's an out-of-town developer who has dismissed our way of life falsely claiming we are against any growth and want to remain a cow farm. This is blatant miseries, misrepresentation. We are not against growth, we are against reckless, unbalanced development that harms our county's future. He doesn't care about responsible growth or Spald- Spalding County's long-term stability, only about maximizing profit. Commissioners, this is a moment that will shape our future. Will you protect our financial health and quality of life or allow short-sighted development that drains our resources?
Mike Parrish?
Michael Parrish, I also live at eight-ninety-five Amelia Road. I like to watch as many of these meetings as I can. I can't attend as many as I would like. I, I've watched the workshop y'all did earlier this afternoon, uh, and I want to point out something that Ms. Flowers-Taylor said. Buyer beware. Be careful who you are entering into business with. Minerva will tell you whatever you want to hear in order to secure your votes. And I'm going to illustrate that for you here. I also want to talk about a couple of the things I heard during that meeting. Mr. Davis, you brought up the hardship. There is no hardship. He said there's no hardship. He said that on the record, in this room, standing at this podium, there should be no variance. Any legal statutory interpretation that we all learn our first year in law school says, if you have to have A and you don't have A, you're in trouble. He doesn't have A. There should be a no vote on that. There's another thing that was brought up that I, I really liked. Uh, Mr. Dutton brought it up. What happens if they don't comply? And the answer from the consensus in the room basically was tough luck, James. There is no way to stop them from changing what they want to do mid-flight, as evidenced by Sun City, as evidenced by Grayson Park. And with all due respect, I disagree with the representatives from the county. You do not have the manpower for this. How do I know that? You don't have the manpower now. Forty-two-hundred new homes coming in? You certainly don't have that manpower. When there's eleven-hundred more, you've got even less. There's no chance you have the ability to, to monitor what they're doing. October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, before the county planning commission meeting, uh, the timestamp on the video was one forty and forty seconds. Mr. Davidson said, I do think as a county policy, it would probably be wise to encourage more affordable housing in various places, but I don't think us being able to do it here. This is right. He said clearly, this is not affordable housing. That's what he said on the twenty-ninth. When we get to December, the hardship? He's asked about the hardship. His exact words were, we don't have a hardship. The hardship is the people in the county that need affordable housing, that need to be in their range. So it went from, this is not affordable housing at four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars a pop, to this is affordable housing that the county needs. And now they have changed again to talk about what their hardship is. They will tell you whatever you need to hear to get your vote. He will tell you the grass is blue and the sky is green and it'll get you to vote for him. Buyer beware.
Marie Powell?
Good evening. My name is Marie Powell and I live at one-five-nine Sam Solomon. We also own the property next to us. Um, change is difficult and I stand here in opposition of the village node. I would like to see responsible development and high-density development does not fit that model. Ten years ago, we built our forever home on, on four acres in Spalding County, seeking a quiet community with a country feel. With so many high-density neighborhoods being built not far from us, why not offer more homes on acreage? I'd like to say that the planning committee vote was not unanimous. Two of the five members, I believe, voted against high-density in North Waukegan County. Now I could stand here and den- dance for the next two and a half minutes, but I won't. But I just strongly say vote no to this. Thank you.
Jim Castelaw?
My name is Jim Castelaw, ten-ten Amelia Road, Locust Grove, Georgia. I've been a resident of Spalding County for thirty years. My primary concern regarding the North Tower League project, in addition to the mass development of North Spalding County, is the potential traffic congestion and overcrowding of the roads and highways. My neighbors and I have been trying to get Amelia Road paved for many years to no avail. The most recent action by the Public Works was one of, uh, a use of a mixture of gravel and asphalt to cover the dirt road. And it actually worked for about a year, but now due to the excessive amount of traffic, huge potholes and deterioration have occurred. And most recently, they came out and did some of the patchwork, but it's already sinking in. If the North Project, uh, Tower League project is approved by the commissioners, Amelia Road must undoubtedly be considered for paving and straightening to accommodate all potential traffic generated by hundreds of new homes in the area. In review of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget, it appears that Public Works has a budget of five million, four, four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and ten million, nine oh, nine-hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred is designated as T-SWAS funds. In conversation with representatives of the Public Works Department, I was advised that Spalding County has a hundred-and-twenty-one dirt roads totaling eighty-two miles. The estimated cost to pave all those dirt roads in, uh, Spalding County is three-hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars. The cost for paving one mile of dirt road is estimated to be three, between three and four million dollars. According to Public Works, approximately one to two million dollars of their budget is designated for roads, including resurfacing, repairing, potholes, et cetera. The cost to pave Amelia Road would be approximately three-and-a-half million dollars if all residents approved the right way for paving. It's a big if. If the North Tower League project is approved by the commissioners and existing residents would not approve whitewater grants, the end result would be disastrous. In fact, the Public Works, uh, Department is considering, I'm not sure if this is true or not, but they're considering converting Amelia Road back to a dirt road because of the bad decisions that were made regarding this tri- traffic paving. I'm definitely opposed to the North Tower League proj- project. And I just found, found out something just within the last, uh, couple of days. I understand that Henry County is planning a project called, uh, The Grove. I understand that Henry County is planning a project called, uh, The Grove. And it's just north of the Spalding County line between Hampton on nineteen and forty-one. They're proposing to put in seven thousand new homes on nineteen and forty-one, along with some retail establishments. If that happens, Spalding County citizens are going to be, it's going to be a disaster for traffic. You've got two main corridors, you've got one fifty-five and, um, nineteen and forty-one. And between the two projects, it will be a total disaster. So I appreciate you voting no for this project.
Kay Wimpy?
Good evening again, Kay Wimpy, one sixty-four South Walkers Mill Road. You as the commissioners are responsible to the constituents living in this community and not the developers that have no ties nor care about our quality of life and the folks living here. The community understands growth, but high-density is not the answer. You use the current standard of three acres to develop a well-maintained subdivision and protect the water resources and land resources. We need the subdivisions that are higher-ended to attract families, not places that will end up as a renter's revolving door under a property management company. We talk about needing affordable housing, but Spalding is becoming the renter's world, and your property managers are charging rent more than what people can buy a house for. This density would also require sewage. How are you going to do the sewage? When you approved all the warehouses out on Arthur K. Bolton, the response was, when that group asked, "What are they going to do for sewage?" You responded as a board, "They are going to have their own treatment facilities." You are now fixing to ask this community to approve an- over an eighteen million-dollar splotch to do sewage just for those warehouses. That didn't need to be out there in the numbers that you approved. These are prime examples of why there should be a moratorium. You currently have something in the industrial park that is roaring every day, that I'm sure these people can hear. I can hear it, Orchard Hill can hear it. It roars from seven o'clock in the morning till five o'clock in the evening. Again, we need a concise plan on how to make things here work for this community. This community has told you time and time again, we do not want to be Henry County. We don't want warehouse after warehouse, and apartment complex after car- apartment complex. We can't even meet the needs based on the taxes you are doing for our own basic needs. You have tripled the taxes in this community. These people are having to bear the burden of whatever is being spent with no explanation. You have a school board that thinks that money grows on trees as well, and your education system is lacking as well. So think about this community and think about what the gentleman said. Look before you get in bed, because those warehouse folks told you whatever you wanted to hear. Now this gentleman and this project is going to tell you whatever you want to hear. Think of your constituents, not the developers. Thank you.
Richard Crowley?
Hello, my name is Richard Crowley, live at sixty-four North Walkers Mill Road. I'm asking tonight for y'all to deny this request, and I'm also asking you to put a moratorium on building, warehouses, housing, it all. And if you look back, as I've stood before y'all before, infrastructure, what have you done for infrastructure? Right now, the traffic counts, well, two thousand twenty-three traffic counts on one fifty-five at Teeman Road is ten thousand three hundred. At Luella, just north of Herring Bay, it is fifteen thousand three hundred. What is this going to add to it? The infrastructure that you have in Spalding County, Teeman Road, the- the road is failing. Jackson Road, it is failing. What have you done to help provide another alternative way for traffic? You haven't. You're trying now to run one fifty-five down North McDonald Road. How is that going to work? With all these trucks and where you have no-through trucks, they can't read, they're using them. I just ask that y'all seriously think about a moratorium and deny this. And speaking of infrastructure, your fire departments, I believe I've heard it in these meetings before. You don't even have enough firemen to man each station every night. If someone calls out, the station's closed. You're adding another one? Close by on Teeman Road? What are we going to do? Are you going to be able to man it? It's not looking that way. I just ask that y'all seriously think about this. I have not, tonight, so far, heard anyone stand up and support. You're here to represent us. I ask that you represent us and not a company that is coming in to pad their pockets and leave. And also, I've heard y'all say Grayson Homes, or whatever that is, Development, it wasn't the way y'all thought it was going to go. You've got a trash dump at the end of a road that goes nowhere? Are you picking that up? I just ask that y'all consider or to deny it. Thank you.
Margaret Norwood?
Good evening, um, Margaret Norwood at twenty-one Pomona Road. I'm here tonight to link arms with the other property owners in the rural communities of Spalding County. Although the current proposed development may not directly affect my own property, which has been in my family almost a hundred and twenty-five years, and I'm hoping to pass it down to my children and to their children's children, I'm very deeply concerned about the ripple effect that these decisions could have on the surrounding rural areas in our future. Many of us chose to settle in these communities for the peaceful, slower-paced way of life they offer, and it's not just about the land that we own. It's about a lifestyle, the serenity, our connection with nature and our connection with each other. We value the quiet, open spaces and the sense of community that rural living brings. Any changes to the character of this area could have long-term consequences, and not only environmentally, but also to the very fabric of the way that we choose to live. I ask that you please consider the broader implications that this development has on all of us who have chosen to make rural communities as our home. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Allison Smiley?
My name is Allison Smiley, I live at two zero seven eight Rehoboth Church Road, Griffin, Georgia. I live in a farmhouse that my great-grandparents, it was a three-room farmhouse they added on in eighteen eighty-seven. They raised their nine children, there were six boys and three girls. It was an almost one-thousand-acre farm at the time. They, my great-grandparents wanted to pass that down to their, uh, children. They had big families back then, they worked on the farm. And, uh, back then, they used to pay the property taxes in pecans. They had a lot of pecan trees, and, uh, can you imagine paying the- paying the property taxes in pecans now? But we, um, it is down now to a two-hundred-acre cattle farm. My sister-in-law and I, and our husbands, uh, inherited it when my parents passed. And, uh, if you think that I don't look like a cattle farmer, you would be correct. But we're trying, because we are trying to maintain that land, we're trying to pass it down to our children. And so I heard a motion for a moratorium. Uh, and I think I saw one hand in favor, and I think I saw the rest of the hands against. And so now I know who to vote for next time, because as people have said, you all represent us. Now, I don't live immediately there, um, on, but I'm, I've been in this community long enough to know that you used to say Tia Laggy instead of Tualaka. My parents and grandparents called it the Tia Laggy River, and we would canoe down the Tia Laggy River. And, um, I sometimes go down one fifty-five, used to go down one fifty-five when I have to go to Henry County, and, um, for a nice relaxing view of the farmland. And I, and now, last time I went, I see little yellow signs everywhere, all up and down there. And those little yellow signs represent all this chaos, this alphabet soup that cannot be put back in the can. And I see them near me, and it's about to be a full-time job trying to keep up with all these meetings to try to come and protest. Now, it's the best thing we can do, we have zoning, let's keep the zoning. Why do we have zoning if we don't keep the zoning? We know growth is going to come, it's not always going to be a cattle farm, we get it. But why do we have zoning? Why do we have a comprehensive plan if we're not going to obey it or stand by it? So now we have to look for these little yellow signs that may mean warehouses, they may mean ultra-high-density development. We're talking about a ware- warehouses, um, nearby on, um, High Falls Lake. Why on earth would you do that? I know that's not what this is, but Rehoboth Road, um, Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, we got warehouses, we got a trash dump out there, we got ultra-high-density development. Once you do it, you, there's no going back. You can do better. People would do the mini-farms, the three- three-to-five-acre mini-farms.
Bruce Ledbetter?
Bruce Ledbetter, two forty Robert Street, no relation. Remember, there are forty-two hundred homes already in the pipeline to be built in District Five. Can you imagine additional traffic that will be added to this already congested travel corridor where those homes are built? The Spalding County senior population is only about nineteen percent of the county population. Sun City Peachtree will have thirty-four hundred homes when built out and only sell in about a hundred a year. There is no current need for an additional eleven hundred homes for senior development, when Sun City Peachtree cannot sell more than a hundred a year. There's already an assisted living facility in the plan for Minerva Spring Lake across from Sun City Peachtree. Commissioners, you have to take into consideration and address the current traffic issues on one fifty-five before you consider approving any additional development, including the proposed request for a gas station, convenience store, the already dangerous intersection of one fifty-five and Teeman Road. Fayette, Henry, and Calee, the counties, all addressed the traffic situation before they added the developments. They addressed the traffic backup areas for roundabouts. They considered the safety of vehicles traveling through these congested areas. Commissioners, before you approve any more developments, you must address and mitigate the traffic with the four-way stop at one fifty-five and Jackson Road and the, uh, Teeman Road. You got to put in some roundabouts in other words, before you build all this crap. So this is why the convenience store gas station should not be approved for the intersection of one fifty-five and Teeman Road. There's too many accidents that's there in gas stations, the convenience store and all that stuff. In my opinion, what the county needs to focus on is to add sewers along sixteen Manufacturing Employment Corridor. This could be the county's number-one priority for economic growth and to take the tax burden off of us, the property owners. Commissioners, I ask you respect the will of all who are here tonight, and ask you to listen carefully to your constituents and find an understanding of their concerns. It's time for a moratorium on building in District Five. And while I got a few seconds, two hundred and seven thousand for drawing of a fire station on free land. Don't make no sense.
Rachel Stroud?
Rachel Stroud, five fifty Amelia Road. Good evening, I stand before you as one of nearly two hundred and fifty members of the Griffin Gun Club, but tonight, I am not just speaking as a club member, I am standing alongside our neighbors who cherish the rural character of this community and recognize the irreversible harm that high-density development will bring. The Griffin Gun Club is a five oh-one C-three and has been a cornerstone of this community for generations, providing more than just a recreation, more than just recreational opportunities. We host youth programs like the Four H, school teams that rely on our facilities for practice, and national organizations such as the Single Action Shooting Society, National Skeet Shooting Association, USPSA Steel Challenge, and more. These events draw participants from across the country, generating economic benefits for local businesses and recognition to the community. Now we're here facing a developer who has paid little to no attention to the interests of our current residents. This proposal, being pla- uh, high-density development, uh, being placed next door to an outdoor shooting range, it's not just ill-conceived, but it's irresponsible and worse. This isn't the first time that this very developer has proposed such an incompatible project. I understand that according to the comprehensive plan, District Five has been identified as an area for higher-density development, but that does not mean that every single parcel in District Five is suitable for this type of high-density. The comprehensive plan desperately needs to be revisited. Spalding County's District Five is u- is unique in that it is home to two outdoor shooting facilities, and history has already shown that with the placement of Sun City Peachtree next to one of Minerva's developments, um, there are ongoing challenges that will undoubtedly follow if this development were to be approved. Beyond the immediate conflict with our longstanding nonprofit, this development threatens the very fabric of our community, and these are just some of our concerns. Overdevelopment in the area, there's already over four thousand homes in the pipeline, and we've yet to even begin to see the effects on the community from those. Um, lack of a completed village node- village node concept. It's my understanding that, uh, Brian from Minerva was actually part of creating the village node code, and, um, even still, the village nodes that exist are still not completed, the, um, the, uh, um, I'm sorry. The shopping and retail does not exist in any of them yet. It's coming supposedly, but we haven't seen it. Um, so what makes us think that it's time to add another one of these, and we haven't seen this work? Um, traffic is obviously a huge concern, we've heard that from almost everybody. Um, why should we believe that the roads would be sustained with approving another three thousand residents in the area when we're still waiting on the four thousand homes that are in the pipeline? Um, lack of critical infrastructure, if you call nine-one-one right now, it first goes to Henry County, which causes confusion, then you might get a response in thirty-five minutes. Um, honestly, it comes across that this proposal is really not about meeting the needs of the county, but rather about meeting the needs of the developer's private sewage, and we ask that you vote no.
Connie Snow?
Hello, my name's Connie Snow, and I reside at four twenty-six Chase Marion Way in McDonald, Georgia, and I'm with Conserv Henry. I came at the request of the six hundred and sixty-five petitioners for the Safe Sp- uh, Spalding County petition. I want to first say that this development is going to have a severe impact on Henry County's water. I've read some documents that show that the runoff is going to pollue our, one of our water reservoirs, which is a critical drinking reservoir for our area. It could potentially lead to mass flooding, and given the ruralness of the area, and I've heard multiple people talk about the lack of emergency resources and the lack of road stability, that's going to impact the emergency services that can get to our community if something should happen with flooding. Additionally, I come from a county that should be a tell of cautionary. We have twenty-five failing schools, our crime rate is astronomical, traffic's a nightmare. Um, I, it would, it, it would surprise you to know that our sex trafficking rate is increasing massively in that county, and all because of high-density development and bad choices on our commissioner's behalf. So I urge you guys to listen to your citizens and do what's right for your county, because what you don't want to be is Henry County.
Mr. Chair, that's all who have signed up for this application.
I'd like to thank all that came forward and spoke and those that came out and supported. It's important to us that we hear what you all have to say. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to come out of public hearing.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four zero, we're out of, uh, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want, I want to thank everybody for being so civil tonight. A lot of times when the room's this full, um, we get a lot more name-calling than, uh, than we probably deserve, but we, I appreciate everybody, um, being so calm and being so civil tonight. I really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. That's really nice. All right, new business. Consideration of, uh, final plat for Rover Rock Farm. Uh, the first item, the agenda is the consideration of, uh, final plat for Rover Rock Farm, a sixteen-lot minor subdivision. Parcels twenty-three, four, zero, five, zero, zero, one, number two-three, four, zero, five, zero, zero, two, A, number twenty-three, twenty-three, four, zero, five, zero, zero, two, B, at the intersection of Rex Road, Mary Brook Road, and Highway three sixty-two. Is there a motion to approve the final plat?
I can motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, I'd just like to make a comment. This is, I don't like growth and developments much, but this is what I stand for on our side, uh, like District Four area. Uh, the smallest lot size is a little over three and a half acres. So, and the largest goes up to
Ten something?
Ten, yeah, ten acres. So, that's, that's the kind of development I like to see.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is for
Item number one.
Rock, rock.
Yes.
My concern is that, um, on the front side, on the first part of the development that's developed, there are multiple driveway cuts. And on the three sixty-two side, we're talking about ten, ten lots, even though there are some are between three and eight acres, there are still gonna be multiple curb cuts on three sixty-two. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's an issue.
There, there's already a bunch of curb cuts though, right? I mean, like on
In that area, yeah. That was one of
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's three sixty-two.
And that, that was one of the areas where they, at first, they did that double driveway crap.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so what's wrong with the double driveway?
Well, it's just people have a shared driveway.
Share, this is Bethany.
One person sells, then it's a nightmare. It works great with the original orders, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm lost. I don't understand what that means. When one person sell, you, you still can't use a driveway?
No, you can, but then they, they fight over it when it's time to repay it or something breaks, it turns into a nightmare for both people. I mean, just over and over and over.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, but, um, the concern is that it's still multiple curb cuts on a, on a state road.
All right, David, Director.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the GDOT has, uh, reviewed and approved this plat. They do have shared driveways, which will mean half the driveways you're thinking on three sixty-two, so they have addressed this issue.
Okay, so it is not a driveway for each yard?
So it does have shared driveways.
Okay, well, I guess I can be quiet about that.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. Motion carries. Item number two, the next item is the consideration of the updated final plat for the collection of Grayson Park Phase Two A and Two B off the North McDonough Road. Is there a motion to approve the updated final plat?
Again, as we discussed in the workshop, this involves, the updates involve, uh, the tree plan resolution that was done out there on Phase Two A. Phase Two B just involves adding some as-built buildings and adjusting one lot line for a firewall. So that's the only updates to this final plat.
So, just a question. It's clear to us that there were some issues that we missed on the front, on the front end of Grayson Park, because we didn't have our planning and development stood up. How are we going to mitigate that on this, on the back end? I, I hear what you're saying, that this is a final plat, but it, but, yeah.
So we did mitigate as far as the landscaping, uh, made them go out there and plant a lot of street trees. Um, that had to be addressed first, so we did. As far as what mitigation can be done now, we did it. So, um, you know, it's just a learning from it and moving on and taking it step by step for the next.
Did they have a, uh, a variance for driveway lengths at Grayson Park?
Not to my knowledge.
So did they meet the, did they not meet the driveway requirement because of, I'm thinking of the short driveway thing.
I don't believe that was stipulated in the code at the time or their
I don't think that there was a condition imposed on Grayson Park related to the driveways comparable with what you've discussed this afternoon.
But is it, isn't there a standard for that?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there a standard for that? It doesn't have to be actually set, right? I mean, it's a, unless you have a variance, it's, there's a
I don't believe, hang on a minute, I don't believe, Commissioner, that there is a specific standard on the driveways.
It will be addressed. We ran it out of the code. That'd be one of many things, but I don't think it's in there now.
You'll have to let me get to, um, hang on. This would be in the subdivision regs.
David, what happens if we say no to this? If we deny it?
There may be some problems with their closings on certain things.
As a general rule on an, on a subdivision plat, whether it's preliminary or final, as a general rule, the, um, issue is solely whether the plat complies with the requirements for a final plat under the subdivision regs. You have very little discretion with regard to whether it does or it does not. Um, if the, if, and I haven't looked at the plat, but if David has analyzed the plat and determined that it has satisfied the criteria of the final plat, then, uh, the, the action would be to move to approve it.
The only holdup is, there again, this was ongoing way before me, but the only holdup, as I understand it, was the street trees, which were resolved.
Well, I mean, it's, Mr. Chairman, it's already clear, they've already developed. Um, um, we didn't have any checks and balances before. Clearly, they'll be there now, but, um, I just think it's gonna be difficult at this phase to, to deny a final plat. I mean, it's basically done.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Flowers Taylor, is that a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to, uh, approve the updated final plat for the collection at Grayson Park Phase Two A and Two B off of North McDonough Road.
Okay. Commissioner, and I have a, a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? Newton, we're still looking for you to provide us the answer while you're out there doing that. All right.
We've just, we've just gotta get our building in zoning quarters. I've been asking since twenty-eight.
We agree. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. Motion carries. The next item on the proposal, is the proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four, Zoning, Article Two, Section two oh two, adding various definitions of solar energy system. Is there a motion to approve the proposed text amendment?
Uh, well, I, I'd like to make a can we, can we talk about it for just a second? Cause I, cause I think we, I think we run into one more amendment that needs to happen tonight.
Right, so
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed text amendments, um, to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four, Zoning, Article Two, Section two oh two, adding various definition of solar energy.
All right.
Now, for the purpose of discussion, if somebody wants to second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
So, we had our, our community experts come out tonight, and I really appreciate them being here. Um, and they talked about how ours currently has like a square footage amount. And sometimes it's a kilowatt-hour amount, this kind of stuff. Is there, is there just a way not to define that as personal use for the residents, you know, whatever that level is? You, you see what I'm saying? Not necessarily a specific square foot or a specific kilowatt amount, but like up to, up to a hundred and twenty-five percent of whatever the house needs or something, you know what I mean?
James, by definition, under the State Co-Generation and Distributed Generation Act.
Yeah.
The ability of the property owner to place the solar array on the property requires that the electricity be generated for their own use. So therefore, somebody who is building an array is building it for their use. Otherwise, otherwise, it violates other provisions of the Electrical Service Code. So, excuse me, you can see that the one hundred and twenty-five percent of load limitation is intended to make certain that the private developer of that facility does not engage in arbitrage to try to sell electricity back to Georgia Power.
We're only one of two states that don't allow that, by the way.
That's, that's correct.
Ridiculous.
But, uh, the purpose of the ordinance itself was intended to define the uses and look at it not from generation so much, because there would be other limitations on it, but from location. All right, in other words, is it unsightly? Is it consistent with the neighborhood? Is, should it be located in the side or the rear yard? Now, that's what the ordinance attempted to do. Now, we've learned that the ground-mounted systems maybe need more flexibility than we had drafted into the original text. But I, I would not recommend that you tie this ordinance to a generation amount.
The kilowatt reference has been removed, so that's no longer an issue. So, what is, has been discussed this afternoon was maximum of twenty panels or five hundred square feet. So, zoning code is broad zoning code. It, it, it's a, tries to strike a balance between anything goes and too much. And the intent here, and I understand that the gentleman is now, very knowledgeable on it, has fifty-some-odd acres. Not an issue. However, in other places where you have one or two acres in a subdivision, it could be. So this co-stuck, start, sought to strike a balance between that, um, by having the twenty panels, maximum five hundred square feet as a starting point to get this ordinance going.
Mr. Galway, it's my understanding that, um, item number three here is for the addition of the definitions. What you're discussing is for the, uh, the use.
That's correct.
So that's a, that's a secret, a separate discussion point.
No, but, but that's, that's what I'm saying. What if, what if we define the, made the definitions just personal use amount? What, you know, you see what I'm saying? As opposed to getting into the nitty-gritty of size and area, just, yeah, we have, we have solar farms, we have large solar farms, we have small solar farms, we have medium solar farms, and then everything else should just sort of be personal use amounts. Roof, roof-mounted, you know.
I think there should be, my personal opinion, there should be some controls over the, again, the look of it and make sure, and not saying these gentlemen would, but doesn't go to extremes. Um, you would have a variance process in place, so if, like we were talking about, not in the front yard. Well, okay, that's, your backyard gets total shades. You come to us with a variance hardship, or I can't use my solar. So I think the variance allows for some flexibility, and there may be most people with this ordinance using solar that are perfectly fine with it. There's always gonna be a stray variance, and I think the variance process would cover that in unusual circumstances and give the flexibility that this code can't be all things to all situations, but I think the variance thing gives some flexibility with that.
So if I needed, in order to get to the hundred and twenty-five percent or even a hundred percent, I needed twenty-four panels on my house. Because my kids leave the TV on all the time. Um, I would have to come for a variance to go from twenty to twenty-four.
Yes.
You see what I'm saying? That's
So, but by the same token, I understand what you're saying, because it would not be an unusual thing in this community if someone were trying to provide solar for their house and the neighbor's house on both sides. So, so if it is for your personal use, there must be some number that says that if your house is five thousand square feet or, or whatever it is, it's fifteen by fifty, that you require this amount of power.
Well, we have power meters, I mean, it's, we know how much power exactly.
Well, so that's, that's what I'm saying, and if that is for your personal use, then if, if, if you're, when you come to get your permit, planning and development should review that and be able to say, this is way too much for, for, for your house usage, so.
Or, hey, you need twenty-four panels instead of twenty, because this is what you're using.
So I would like being able to, to say personal use. Maybe, I don't know if that's a definition that we need to put in, that would say
It has to be for personal use.
Right.
Because he is prohibited from selling directly to an adjoining neighbor.
Okay, I, I know he is prohibited, but we, you know, we do stuff that we're not supposed to. I'm just being real.
Well, what I, what I was saying, Commissioner, is he can sell, he could sell a small amount of Georgia power, who could then convey it to the person next door. But he cannot sell to his neighbor.
So he can't provide them with any
Now, there's another quirk to this, because on a ground-mounted system, there are other programs where he could potentially build an array that is ground-mounted on a fifty-acre track. It would be considered a small system. Uh, but depending upon the size and its output, he could actually be a participant in a program that Georgia Power has for small distributed generation project. So, it may not be intended just, the panels may not be intended just for the use of that house, possibly. I, I would hope that, subject to what was discussed at the workshop, where you discussed revising this to allow the ground-mounted for personal use on a particular lot to be placed in the back, but not on the side, I would ask that y'all go ahead, allow us to amend that, come back on second reading. And if there are further revisions required related to the number of panels, pull the gentleman back in, I think his name was Mr. Potter or Mr. Burns. And bring them back in and let's see what they need to see if a further tweak can be made to it.
I can move that.
Uh, cause when you start talking kilowatts and all that, I'm totally like deer in the headlights, so, so, yeah.
We're talking about bringing it back in for a second reading.
So, so for tonight, we're asking for an approval with the conditions that were changed, the amendments that we made today. And then the, the things that we're talking about. Now, we will discuss that between now and second reading.
Your motion would be to approve the draft that David's presented with an amendment to allow a ground-mounted solar array to be located in the rear of a residential lot.
If you're, if you were, uh, an acre lower than that.
If you're an acre or lower, and then we will come back after we talk with Mr. Potter and Mr. Burns. They have been very, at least Mr. Burns has been very active in working with David on making these revisions.
So, in that case, I would like to, well,
We have a motion and a second.
That's, that's a, that, that's not the definitions. I need to make a motion for the definitions. This other motion would be for the
The second for
Commissioner Flowers Taylor, I will tell you with the definition, the last portion of the last sentence talks about the panels and the square footage in the definition. So you could either strike that or, but I will tell you, if you approve the definition, the mention is maximum of twenty panels and five hundred square feet.
My motion is to table.
Okay.
If, if it's not together and we, we
You have a pending motion that was seconded, you need to
I, I, I rescind my motion.
I'll, I'll rescind my second.
Okay. I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
All right.
I thought
We'll get, we'll get it eventually. We'll get it eventually.
All right, that was five zero.
Um, Mr. Chairman, in lieu of Um, Mr. Chairman, in lieu of that, um, requesting that item number four also be tabled because we really can't do that without the definitions. Motion to table item four as well.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Uh, the next, the next item is application twenty-five dash zero one Z, uh, Mark Anderson, owner. Twenty-one, twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in land lot two two six. Of the third land district parcel number two one two zero one zero zero seven B. Consisting of two point two acres, the applicant is requesting to rezone from R two. Single family residential to A R one agricultural residential. To be able to use the property for more agricultural purposes, specifically beekeeping and cultivation. Is there a motion to approve the rezoning request?
Motion to approve, uh, you beat me to it, I'll second.
Okay, did, did.
I, I have a question though for the.
Hold on, uh, did she mark, I'm sorry.
He, he.
Okay, okay, got it, I just didn't hear you, okay.
But I have a question.
I have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, um, wha- what, have you kept bees before, is this gonna be a new? Thing that you're doing, or is this?
Well, we.
I have the beekeeping merit badge, they don't even offer it anymore, that's how old I am, so.
Um, well, we moved out from Arizona and we were actually, uh, actually still have a couple acres, forty acres out there. And that was what we were in the process of doing, and I got seduced by the, uh, US Army Heritage Foundation. Uh, we have a bunch of helicopters at Speedway, so now I came out here to become their chief AMP mechanic. Uh, so, yeah, so I had to kind of abandon all of those plans, and then, yeah, we come out here and.
You strap them to a truck, bring them here, that's fine.
I know, right, yeah, exactly, yeah, just, um, but, uh, but actually, I, I, I work for my boss over there and she's the one that, uh. And does the beekeeping, I just, uh.
Sure.
Yeah, I just move everything around for her.
Well, we're excited, we're excited, bees are fundamental to our agriculture, without them, we all, we're all dead.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is application twenty-five dash zero one V. Uh, Mark Anderson, owner, twenty-one, twenty-five Jackson Road. Uh, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in land lot two two six of the third land district. Parcel number two one two zero one zero zero seven B, consisting of two point two acres. The applicant is requesting a variance in lot size due to rezoning, is there a motion to approve the variance?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any more discussion? Uh, David, this is the difference between two point two and three?
Yes.
That's what the, we're talking about, okay, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is application twenty-four zero three S, Stuart Boys. Woodland Church, twenty-two ninety and twenty-three hundred North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately one hundred thirty-two point two five total acres. Located in land lot one eleven of the second land district, parcel numbers two zero four zero one zero zero one and two zero four zero one zero two zero. The application is seeking a special exception to develop a religious campground per section five zero three B fifteen. That's, uh, the application, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, application twenty-four zero three S. Uh, for Woodland Church to, um, for a special exception to develop a religious campground.
There are conditions.
With conditions as stated by staff, would you read them, please?
Yes, ma'am, uh, also, the applicant is here, I believe, not here at the workshop, so, um. Staff conditions were as following, no vehicle parking shall occur within a right of way, number two, permanent cabins shall be limited to no more than a total of ten. And shall be located out of the stream buffer setbacks and flood zone. Applicant may ask for more permanent cabins in the future to be approved at the discretion of the planning commission and board of commissioners. Number three, permanent cabins are subject to all septic and water permit requirements by environmental health department. Four, permanent cabins shall only be used or occupy for participants of specific religious retreat events during those events. Five, church shall have a, provide a liability insurance policy, six, splash pads shall be fenced as per swimming pool fence requirements. Seven, use of ropes core shall be supervised by church staff, eight, final site layout shall be subject to far, approval by the fire marshal. Nine, access to cabin areas should be gated and restricted to general public between retreat events. Fire marshal should be granted twenty-four hour access to any gates. Ten, walking trails shall not be used, shall not be used by the general public after dark. Eleven, there should be a twenty-five foot natural buffer preserved on all side and rear property lines. Ten, twelve, no RVs or pop-up campers, it should have also said tents allowed on the property, only cabins with permanent foundations, concrete slab. Thirteen, no clear cutting of the property will be allowed in conjunction with construction of the campground areas. Fourteen, any extra driveways at the campground for North McDonough Road requires G dot approval. Those are the fourteen we had, uh, the board and the workshop was, uh, discussing several others, possibly minimizing the impervious surface. Um, possibility of an acceleration, deceleration lane, and then. Wanting the cabins to each have a full bath.
Bath facilities. So those are three additional, three additional conditions other than what is already.
Yes.
Presented.
Um, it was brought up in the public hearing about a, uh. Specifying a stay time, I don't know if that really applies to this. It pretty much be how long the retreat was, but I, I, you could limit it if you wish.
Um, well, I, I, I made a motion, but we didn't give the, the person a chance to speak, Mr. Chairman, the applicant.
If you would like to come forward and speak. I, I'm sorry if that sounded kind of crude, I didn't mean for it to.
Speak to what specifically, I'm here to answer questions if you'd like to.
Did you hear all of the conditions?
I heard all of the conditions, yes.
You okay with all the conditions?
I am.
Alright, anything else?
Name and address.
My name's Stuart Boys, I live, uh, in McDonough, eleven ninety-five North Road, McDonough.
Okay.
You have a motion on the table, oh, on the table, but not a second.
So, so, so as far as the motion.
Didn't I second?
Specifically, specifically.
I'll second.
Um, in terms of the impervious surface, what was it that you, you said that we said we wanted?
Minimize the impervious surface in regards to.
So I'm not really sure what that means, what, what minimize means.
Mr. Boys, would the trails be? I, I think you said to me they were gonna be a little bit paved, but when you get back to the woods area, they would not be paved, they'd be like gravel or mulch or something?
Walking trails are not gonna be paved, they would just be mulch and or, um, they would be pervious.
So into the camp area, the camping stay area, how, what is the plan for that, will you also have impervious?
We can do a gravel road, um, we have a paved road that goes into the church and we thought of, excuse me, branching off of that. Uh, not necessarily a paved road, even though that's, I mean, it looks like that on the site plan. But we're trying to keep it, um, rural looking and nature-ish looking, so we don't really want to. Develop it, make it look modern, if, if you get my meaning.
So, 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 what, what I would say is. If they're going to use a driveway that they already have in the camp area, it's going to be beyond that.
That's correct.
That.
All trails pervious.
Yeah, everything is pervious beyond.
Beyond the parking lot and the church driveway.
And do you have any concerns with, uh, providing, uh, uh, the in. I, I call it in suite, but in building shower and restroom per cabin. I think the original was that the restroom and shower was gonna be out somewhere outside of the cabin.
Well, we, we're gonna build like a bathroom that many people could use. Not necessarily one per building.
Right, but you'll have to leave out of the cabin, my concern was that if you have to go out and use the restroom at night. Or go and take a shower at night, you're going outdoors.
Right.
So, so maybe some adults might not have a problem with that, but I'm, I'm just thinking of kids walking. Out to go to the bathroom when, when they're sleeping.
I was okay with it, I got a thousand nights camping, I'm.
Say that again, sir, I'm sorry, what?
I said, I'm, I'm totally fine with it not having bathrooms in every cabin, I, I got a thousand nights camping, I'm.
Alright, but, but the plan right now is bathrooms in each.
And, 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 yeah.
Okay, uh, alright, have we worked out the impervious?
Yes.
Are you satisfied?
But, but you were, the, the landlord is also okay with the condition there being that every cabin, that was one of the conditions that we wrote off, right?
Yes.
That every cabin has to have its own.
That's fine, it's.
Okay, alright, any other comments, any other discussion?
Could we get clarity on the?
The motion is to approve, to approve the application for the, a religious campground with the stipulations as recorded. I mean, with the, um, conditions as recorded in, uh, in our, our official request along with the three additional ones. To, uh, no additional impervious surfaces beyond the driveway. Uh, toileting facilities in each building. And.
G dot, const- consultation with G dot about A cell D cell lane.
Consult G dot about the A cell D cell lane because it's becoming. More, more activity other than just going to church.
Yeah, that's what I second.
So that's, that's my motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries.
We all have a great time out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, who was the second?
James. Um, Mr. Chair, the next item is application twenty-four thirty-two Z, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at Owl. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres. Located in land lot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the second land district. Parcel number is two zero one zero one zero zero one, two zero one zero one zero zero one A, two zero one zero one zero zero one B. Two zero one zero one zero zero one D, two zero 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 one zero zero one, two zero 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 one zero zero six. Two zero 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 one zero zero one B and two zero one zero one zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R two and A R two to Village Node District. That's, uh, the application, sir.
Alright, now we've got four of these, right?
That's correct.
Alright, uh, David?
Okay, uh, so this is just for the rezoning, uh, this is based upon the most current, uh, concept plan that was forwarded to you. It is dated March nineteenth, no other plan, this supersedes all that. Um, we discussed many, many things during the three o'clock workshop, I will take questions on any details. I think it is important to reiterate what our approved comprehensive plan and future land use map say on this matter. So I will put that into the record for this meeting. Uh, this area is in the Sun City Heron Bay character area. The vision of which is, will provide unique housing concepts to serve the needs and desires of a multi-generational population. Area will integrate recreational spaces and commercial developments to allow for easy access to service and amenities. The Sun City Heron Bay character area supports master plan developments, tend to accommodate a mix of residential, commercial, and recreation uses. It is primarily characterized by moderate density detached single-family uses with recreational amenities. This character area is defined by large master plan communities that are primary residential, but also have potential to accommodate commercial uses. Primary future land uses in this area is moderate to high-density detached single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings. Master plan developments, commercial civic benefit areas, greenways and trails. Compatible active zoning districts for this, there's a whole list from R one, R one A to R two. The last one of which is what they're proposing, which is Village Node VN. The den, the desired density intensity in this area is one to four density units per acre. Uh, this is about two point nine, I believe, it's in the middle of that one to four acre, uh, density. Uh, talks about green space and connectivity and using public water or private sewer, so. It does align with your approved comprehensive plan and future land use map. They were speaking of in the, uh, public hearing about developing it as is, and. If this was not approved and this developer or any other developer wanted to develop this as a large subdivision. They certainly could by right as an R two subdivision. Um, R two is minimum two acre lots, not three acre lots, you could have a couple hundred houses easily along this. You'd have a lot of roads in this because it'd be stretched out lots, two acre lots is a lot more than smaller lots as far as the length of roads. Uh, every single one of these would be on septic systems and wells, which is not good for the groundwater areas or the aquifers. Um, so you have that scenario, you also would not have any control over how the houses looked. You would not have the Amelia Road improvements that are in the approval conditions, nor the North McDonough Road approval condition, uh, improvements that are in the conditions. The senior assisted living facility, which I believe is a necessary. Uh, feature for this county, uh, would not be approved because it is a part of, linked to the rezoning and the, this concept plan. So there are quite a few things you would still have. Many houses, um, harm to the groundwater area, the aquifers, um, you still have pollution. Uh, lots of roads, so that is under R two what it is now, so. There is still a chance of having many houses and much infrastructure, much impervious surface, so I just wanna remind the board of that. I'll take questions about certain details from the workshop, if you want to.
Well, let's, uh, have, uh, Mr. Davison come up from Minerva and, uh, have an opportunity as the applicant to speak.
Thank you, I'm Brian Davison of Minerva USA, two two nine two Henderson Mill Road, Atlanta. I'm gonna try to run through this as quick as I can, I apologize, a lot of slides to cover issues, a lot of, um. We've got a lot of feedback from people, I'm trying to address them, uh, as much as I can, one by one.
Right, this is important, so go ahead, take your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Work our way through this.
Great, thank you. Um, I, I'm gonna hit a few topics, uh, just quickly outline our requests, uh, I'm gonna talk about the comprehensive plan, I'll try to skip through that quicker since David covered it so much. I will talk to you about community involvement, um, interactions we've had and requests that were made. I'll talk to you then, as equally importantly, which, uh, is what the community is planned to be itself, uh, architecture, parks, everything else, um. I'll talk to you about the financial impact of our community, both, um, revenues and on the, uh, impact on population and schools. Uh, and then I'll try to run through as many items as I can, I think that I've, that we, we tried to pre-anticipate, uh, that, that people have talked about here, um. And I'll, I'll go through the one by one with some slides and some visuals, it'll help you sort of, uh, understand and visualize, um. Some issues and topics, and I'll just dive right into it if that's okay. Alright, so first thing is the request to rezone to VN. Uh, second is the variances, uh, for, uh, the, the smaller lots when they're age restricted to allow, uh, forty foot wide lots instead of fifty and twelve hundred square feet versus fifteen. Um, this is the one that I heard a lot of comments about, uh, about having a requirement or hardship for the. The hardship, uh, i- i- is not, in no way is intended to generate additional lots, uh, just to give you a perspective. Um, you're talking a hundred and twenty of these across the whole project, the intent is to have three different price points. In, in the active adult housing area, um, similar to Sun City, Sun City is the same thing, it, it has the small lots at forty feet with the smaller homes, midsize and larger. Uh, it basically provides housing for, uh, uh, people that may just not want a bigger house. Or may not be able to afford it, uh, a lot of the people in Sun City would be single females, that sort of thing, um. When you take this, it's ten feet wide across a hundred and twenty lots, uh, that adds up to about three and a half acres of total land. So, that's how much land we're saving by making them that one smaller, uh, compared to about a hundred and ninety-nine acres of open space, so. You know, if we, if we shrunk the open space to. You know, if we if we shrunk the open space to a hundred and ninety five acres, we can still squeeze in the same number of lots, so it's not not about the lot count. It's about a good product mix. The last one is a special exception to allow assisted living and nursing home facility, which is just a requirement in your ordinance. Okay, comprehensive plan, and I'll try to go through this real quickly since David went through it. Um, you all know what the plan, massive amount of community meetings, somewhere uh, well, well over um. Thousand people involved in the plan creation, including some of the people on the board here, people all through the community specialists, everything else. Uh, and when you did the comprehensive plan, you have to do a lot of balance in in a county. Uh, there's certain areas that require certain things. Mr. Bolden's district is uh, and Mr. Dutton's for the most part is is highly uh, rural focused. Um, then you have other areas that are the uh, ones closer to Griffin, um, that are are denser and more urban and setting. And District Five is kind of a bit of a blend of both. Uh, this was the plan that was was created. You can see our circle at the very top uh, right corner. I don't know, it's not going to show up on the thing. But your plan basically, as you know, tried to focus uh, any need for housing and growth and revenue generation in two places, basically that northeast quadrant. I guess a little bit around Griffin itself and then the highway once, or the highway sixteen corridor for industrial. And I'll just hammer through these rather, since David read them all, um, I'll I'll just blast you through the things. Every single thing that's listed in that category, we're in compliance with. Uh, from greenways and trails, civic uses, uh, formal landscaping areas, public water and private sewer. Uh, broadband, high pedestrian connectivity with sidewalks, green whales, tr- greenways, trails and paths, we're in compliance. Uh, the density, depending on how you calculate it, we calculate it using the comp plan, which is two point one units per acre. Spalding has a few different ways to calculate it in its ordinance. Uh, but they're all in the in the two to two point seven units per acre range, depending on how you calculate it. Uh, high percentage of open space, uh, we're required to have a tiny amount of open space per the ordinance. I think it's twenty or thirty acres. This is uh, well in excess of that. Uh, compatible zoning, uh, we're a hundred percent in compliance with your 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 plan and your target for the area. Um, I'll then switch to the community uh, involvement. Um, we've met with different people in different groups, probably a couple larger meetings. Uh, that we put out around the area. Most of the people that participated in that came from a corridor. Um, oh, here, I can show you. This is uh, you can see our plan overlaid on the aerial there. Uh, most of the people that have been here to talk tonight are focused in that uh, peninsula of land that kind of is surrounded by Henry County's preservation land. So you can see that almost two thousand acres of land that's preserved all around them, so they are in a pretty great little. Uh, I'll call it hidden away rural pocket there, but they are worried about the impact of our development on them. Um, and that's where, that's where most of the feedback came from. We got a lot of, uh, we we presented an original plan that looked like this. Uh, you can see townhomes in the bottom left corner was on the original plan. We had active adult on the south side of the property, not the north, um, variety of different design features. And here's the list of uh, issues that came up from those initial neighbor meetings. This the south part is too close to the gun club. Uh, homes with children will generate too much traffic. Access from the road, uh, from the main track on will create too much traffic onto Amelia Road. Houses are too close to the reservoir. They don't like townhomes, too dense. It needs a central park area, ideally connected to the commercial area. Uh, that actually came from planning commission. Too many cul-de-sacs, uh, use a grid system for roads. Needed more green space, and they asked for smaller lots in Amelia, uh, or the smaller lots we originally designed in Amelia were not in character with the existing two acre lots in Amelia. So we went back and and redo and came up with this revised plan here. Uh, here's some of the things we did. We removed this forty five acres. It's there. That the gun club is down to the bottom right of this. Um, some of that land was close to the gun club, uh, and I'll talk about the gun club a little later, and it's proximity to what we have left over. Uh, we eliminated the townhomes and replaced them with single-family lots. Uh, we created a central green and connected to the heart of the retail. We eliminated uh, twenty seven cul-de-sacs and changed to a grid style road pattern in light with of in accordance with the VN design regulations. Increased the open space up to a hundred and ninety nine acres, which is thirty eight percent of the total property. Uh, we added a two hundred foot buffer from the reservoir at the high pool level. That was uh, not a mandate, but a request by the Henry County Reservoir Manager. Um, and we shifted, it was a good idea, we shifted the active adult from, which was on the south part of the property to the north part, so across the top. Uh, including that piece on the other side of Amelia Road. The intent of that was to minimize the amount of traffic. Active adults uh, generate far less traffic than families do just because of less vehicle movements, taking kids around, that sort of thing. Uh, and then we created acreage lots fronting on Amelia Road. And we eliminated the connection onto Amelia Road, which I'll talk about in a second. And that was a request to to stop the the traffic from the main property to to connect onto Amelia. We but we sit through this process, were asked back by Spalding uh, for road circulation to add that road connection back to Amelia. Uh, in in a plan, um, for probably a variety of reasons, uh, including um. Probably safety and and access more than anything, I would imagine, uh, probably things that were learned from the uh, damage of of the. Um, and destruction that came through here a few years ago. And then I'll talk to you now about the whole community as it's uh, as we envisaged it. Here's the, so amenity, so. We we've designed this plan with three different amenity areas, okay? There definitely would be at least two of them built, uh, possibly three. The two differences will be, one will be uh, for the age restricted area, so it'll be like the Sun City one with. Limits against kids. It won't have the kids play areas, that sort of thing. The other one would be family oriented, um, and and they would be separated. Um, so in different pots, pots throughout the community, little pocket parks, uh, meeting areas, that sort of thing. Uh, parks are a big part of it, so communal parks will be a a big feature in in this. Back we did here in Bay, golf was the thing. Uh, now the focus, uh, I'd say nationwide is basically parks, open space and trails are what everybody desires and and prefers to have. Uh, it appeals to virtually everybody, whereas golf is, you know, below ten percent of the market. So parks is going to be an important part, and then of course, walking trails. So trails throughout the community. Uh, it's designed and under the VN ordinance, we have to have sidewalks on both sides of the road everywhere. Um, and the sidewalks are not immediately on the road. They're divided from the road by a six-foot landscape strip with tree planting. Uh, down both sides, so you end up with that beautiful tree canopy that grows and matures over the years, and I'll show you a few photos of that later. Um, Henry County also has a uh, trail system throughout the um, reservoir protection land. There's no guarantee that everybody be able to perpetually use that. They're very open to it. They want to encourage it. But one of the things they've asked us to do is to create a conditions list to let buyers know that it is private land. It's not part of the community. They don't have the. Perpetual right to use it, that it's at the will of the the Water Authority. They also asked us to um, anywhere where there's access points to the trail system. To try to block it with bollards or something like that, or gates to not allow vehicle movement on it. They're having a problem right now of existing residents in the area riding ATVs. And ripping up the trails and doing environmental damage. They want to make sure that we don't do that. We have agreed to all those conditions with them. Uh, then the homes in the neighborhood, um, I'm going to show you sort of just three quick slides with some different photos. The intention here is is to have uh, homes with fair degree of of architectural character and detail. Um, and and you could have a range of different uh, types of of styles when you have active adult versus family, one story versus two, that sort of thing. You definitely have some, I think somebody mentioned here, there's some gaps in your code as far as controlling the architectural uh, detailing. I think Grayson Park was a classic example of that. We have already been meeting with um, your various personnel, trying to uh, en- encourage a. Stronger housing standard in the county, um, in in detailing and in finishes and quality. Uh, to try to ensure that Spalding County doesn't become the dumping ground metro-wide for low-end housing. Um, there's an awful lot of things you can do that add depth, character, uh, quality to the houses. And allows them to mature at a much higher level. Um, but most national builders uh, tend to defer to the, and most builders period tend to defer to the. Uh, cheapest, fastest, easiest way to do things. So defining uh, sets of guidelines for them to uh, is pretty critical, whether it's nicer uh. Trim detail around windows or not putting shingles on front porches, you know, having these metal roofs or having bigger. Uh, posts on the front porches or brick water tables on each house, uh, better garage doors, you know, and on and on and on. Um, we we have proposed to the county months and months ago, um, a a list of detail. It's hard to put that stuff in writing. Um, we've we've done it over the years within uh, neighborhoods, trying to control the builders. So that we don't have to monitor and manage them going forward and to have a tool where they look at it and they go, yes, I understand what I have to meet. And if they don't, we as Architectural Control can say no, and the county does as well. Um, should this uh, be approved, we I, we've proposed. Uh, architectural standards that are fairly extensive to be added and included and attached as part of the zoning, so they'll run with the land. Um, outside of this project, I would encourage you separately to to consider it. Uh, county-wide as you're reworking on your ordinances, but as far as this ordinance going through, without those, you're, it it's a little thin. With them in place, it locks down the quality, I think, to to what we're looking for.
Thank you for that.
Uh, you're welcome. It's it, you know, it, it's just, it it, it's easy for me to talk to a builder. About stepping up the quality when there's sort of a hammer in place to enforce it, um, versus begging and cajoling them. Um, and it allows me to be able to sell something and have a good conscience. Three or five years later, knowing that the county can enforce it and will enforce what I've envisaged, rather than just hoping and crossing my fingers, so. Uh, the commercial site is is interesting. We, one of the big requests of planning commission was to create a community park. Uh, that intersects with the uh, commercial and so everything's pedestrian oriented here. The. Community park we see as being a great central point, um, so it's not just shopping center related where you drive your car, come in park and leave. The people from the community come in essentially from the backside of the center and don't need the road access, um, and. Uh, can use the services in the center, which will be really interesting. And here here's sort of how that design sort of materializes. That's that's the middle point, so picture the park actually behind this. Um, and and so this is what faces to the parking lot, but people would from the neighborhood come through the center of the center. Uh, in into the middle of it, at which point, um, they're they're more connected. In most places, virtually everywhere around Metro Atlanta, our retail is just strip retail. It's a hundred percent car-driven, car-centric. Um, and we we hope that this will encourage a lot more of those people to actually use the core, which of course will make it easier to sign tenants. And another shot from a different angle. Senior living, um, we've asked for uh, a a special exception to allow this. Uh, this would be everything from uh, independent living, assisted living through to memory care. Uh, all in one facility. Typically, it's one building. Sometimes you'll see a separate building for the the memory care. Um, up up to two hundred and fifty units in in one location. Um, th- this is one that we built in, I think that's Duluth, I believe, that one. And uh, yeah, I think there's there's definitely strong demand for it uh, in in this area. It's a good addition, good strong tax base and really. Very, very minimal impact on services, other than, of course, uh, the the occasional ambulance visit. Uh, financial impact. I'll try to again move through this fairly quickly. I apologize for the length of this. Uh, revenue from housing versus commercial, um, that comes up a lot. Uh, Commissioner Dutton was just talking about the Georgia Tech study, which was done in Effingham County. Uh, which is, you know, it primarily rural, and there there is definitely a big, big impact in rural homes versus. A community home in terms of services. When you start congregating things together, well, the biggest one is length of road, distances traveled, that sort of thing. And then also in rural areas, you tend to get a lot of um, lower tax numbers for the amount of uh, road frontage you have, that sort of thing, so. Um, the revenues don't match, and in fact, and I know some of the people in here have kubas on their property to to lower their tax uh, even more. The Wilson family is a classic example. It is five hundred and forty acres and they pay about sixty four hundred dollars in annual taxes because of the kuba. Now, when we break it, if this is zoned, there's an immediate penalty of somewhere around three hundred thousand, um, and then taxes will obviously rise. So here's one thing, the average house value in Spalding is two hundred and forty thousand, so you took in a house of people that have a need um, for services. And then you compare it to another house in in our community, um, you you're talking double the house price, so you're essentially talking double the tax. With the same number of people, same impact. Uh, median household income. For this one, um, we took the the Census Track sixteen oh two point oh two. Which is sort of that northeastern sector, which is where a hundred percent of Minerva's development has been to date in the county. Uh, and you can see the the impacts on median household income and and uh, per person income. That translates to a lot to uh, spending uh, and and involvement in the community financially. Discussion of fees and revenues. Here's here's the total tax. Spalding's total tax, including everything, is is about ninety one thousand, um. Uh, North Tallaliga, uh, at today's millage rates and today's prices will generate about eight point six million annually. Uh, but they'll only add about three point nine percent, so it's a nine point four percent increase in revenues, but only a three point nine percent increase in housing units. And keep in mind, half of those are targeted to be active adult as well. Uh, school tax revenues. Of that, North Tallaliga will generate uh, about four million, which is about a ten percent increase over what. Um, the county currently has, so the Griffin-Spalding School Board. Um, but only adding about four point six percent of kids, so double the revenue versus the number of kids. Uh, this is this is Spalding County yourself, your your M and O numbers, so adding three point seven million a year. Plus one-time impact and permit fees of eight point one million. Um, and then you have your fire department, adding another eight hundred and forty five thousand a year in annual revenues. Eight forty five would bond finance, what, somewhere around twenty million dollars probably, if they chose to use it that way, or hire more staff and people. Uh, from the Water Authority's perspective, um, they'll generate additional water sales revenues at their current price of about one point one million. Which is a ten percent increase over their annual budget. I know they're trying to spend money elsewhere to try to generate economic growth. I'm sure they'd appreciate the 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 money. Um, on top of that, tap fees, uh, of two point five million plus, as of about two weeks ago, they've added a capital recovery fee. Which is another three point one million, so. A fairly large impact. That water sales revenue obviously is not all profit. Um, I don't know what proportion of their. Water sales are profit or not, but that that amount of extra funding will generate a fair amount of bond financing for them. Okay, this this comes up, I hear it all the time, that our proposal is high-density or cluster homes. Uh, I mean, this is from the Stop Spalding Sprawl Facebook page, just images that have been posted out there. I mean, AI-generated, obviously, I mean. You have a road between every set of houses. Nobody has a backyard. It's just a row after row to row, and the same with the other ones. There's houses with no roads. It's just, it looks. Pretty, pretty awe-inspiring since you have so many houses packed in when you do it with AI. Um, they they could have also chose this one, which actually probably closely mirrors the um, this this would be the active adult. This would be the um. Traditional home in terms of massing, streetscape, the separate separation from the streets, backyards for people. Um, there's a typical streets, treescape before the trees mature. And then this is cluster housing. That's not. That is. That's cluster housing. That's about eight units per acre, so you have a term in your your zoning ordinance. That calls things cluster housing, even though they're traditional, single-family, and it just allows um, some people to just, you throw the term out like. A traditional subdivision home with a backyard is cluster housing. That's what cluster housing looks like. Um, that that, uh, and then this is high density. Obviously, we're not even close to high density. These these are, this is streetscape of, this this is Minerva communities. This is what it looks like when you put sidewalks in, six-foot. Planted area with trees as they mature. These are all actual communities. Um, that's, I think that one, that one's in Heron Bay. I know that for a fact. That's Heron Bay too, I think. So it's not that, you know, hor- horrific wasteland, um. But the tree planting and the vegetation and all those standards are really important. We included them in the architectural standards under the landscape section to make sure that those are mandated on the builders. Now, everybody's correct, it's going to depend upon the county to continue to enforce things going forward. Uh, our proposed wording includes a process in which the builder, every builder of every house has to submit the plan. To the county staff to allow them to review it before it's built, including elevations, materials, that sort of thing. Henry County's water quality protection boundary. Henry County's water quality protection boundary, another discussion here, um. This, this is, this is their map, this is the Henry County water quality protection areas, each color is for a different, uh, lake basin, okay? And to orient you, I don't know if you, I can't really point here, but over on this side here, that, that's the racetrack in Hampton. Coming down is one fifty five, that intersection up there is, um, highway twenty. The one fifty five intersection is in the middle of that green one. Um, and then what we did just to, to overlay that. Yeah, and, and just also for perspective, I can't point it here, but that little bit of the white. Uh, in the sort of center bottom is, is where we are, so Spalding County is all white, obviously, that the district doesn't apply to us there. Um, what we did was we took that outer boundary, so the outer boundary of that. And overlaid it on an aerial map, so you can see how Henry County manages their own watershed protection district. All that industrial is all in the watershed protection district, every one of those tens of thousands of subdivision lots. Under a water protection district, so that being said, the reservoirs are still great quality, they provide water for their people. It's, it's in some of the buffers and in the nuanced care of how you manage the, the quality of water going into them. You can see us way down at the bottom corner there, see the pink in the bottom middle, that's our project with the white hash lines. Spalding County, um. I think in deference and respect for Henry County, Spalding County, back, I don't know, twenty years ago probably, when those reservoirs were built. Past its own, uh, restrictions and, and watersh- uh, watershed protection regulations, this is just some of the excerpts from them. Um, so you have a, on any perennial stream, which is a year round running stream that runs. Into, uh, one of the reservoirs, you have a two hundred foot wide no disturb zone and a three hundred foot wide no impervious surface, that's more than double a traditional buffer zone. Uh, along the reservoir, uh, you, um, there, there's an, well, we actually added a two hundred foot no disturb setback to the high water level. Um, the flood zone obviously is unbuildable, and then the inundation zone as well, uh, is, is unbuildable, and I'll show you that in a second. Discussion of the inundation zone. This is, this is Henry County's map of the inundation zone, this was done, I'm not sure back when. Um, and we're basically in the top, sort of top center to the top center left, the, all those fields up there. Um, is, is this property? Um, the ma- the mapping, uh, we've overlaid it on our, um, on our plan and it doesn't, um. Line up properly to topo lines, you know, I think when they did this, I'm not sure what topo they used, it might have been the old five or ten foot. Uh, USGS topo, I'm not sure, we had the same issue with the, the, the boundary line along the Koha Reservoir. Um, but basically, that's designed when the lower Tallaliga or the upper Tallaliga reservoir dam breaks in a, in a. Emergency event, which is off to the left, uh, it will theoretically flood downstream and back up against anything stopping it. So, the, the biggest thing that affects our property is Amelia Road itself, the Amelia Road elevation is right at about, uh, six hundred and eighty feet. So, assuming it acts as a dam, it's just got a small opening underneath it, it'll, Amelia Road will essentially be like a dam. And backwater up to that six hundred and eighty, and once it goes above six eighty, it's going to start spilling over that into the, into next area. Uh, I don't know how much higher it will go, I'm going to guess three, four feet, but I'm not an engineer. So we took those lines and laid them along our property and none of our lots are within those inundation zones. Um, that being said, we've been waiting on a precise, uh, elevation calculation from Henry, they're redoing their ordinance, which will be done, or their. Inundation dot zones to be done in six to twelve months, they tell us. Um, and when those are done and we have an actual topo line, we can draw it on our topo, and that'll just be a basic. Part of Hen- uh, Spalding County's review process, obviously not allowing any houses in the inundation zone, so it should be a total non-issue. Um, there you go, proximity to the gun club. Um, this, this was an issue and we did have originally, eh, pointer doesn't work here, but. Uh, the pieces that came down closer to the gun club, we withdrew, they were in our original plan, we withdrew them because. Uh, of, of their request, um, and this is distances now, this is in miles. For the closest parts of the property to the, the main, uh, outdoor range of the gun club, so you're one point four to one point six miles. Basically depending on where it is, um, Sun City, for example, next to Cherokee Rose is zero point four miles, so. Uh, qu- quite a bit different, but, you know, they shoot some pretty serious, uh, weapons there, I think they, you know, they're fifty cal and. AR fifteens and everything else, um, so that noise will be, uh, uh, there and won't go away, as long as the gun club is around. Um, so what we do when we develop a neighborhood, when we sell individual parcels of land to home builders. And then they in turn sell lots to, to home buyers, we do a set of, um, of dis- um, disclosures to them. Uh, the Heron Bay one, for example, included that you're abutting the lake property. But you don't actually have technically have access that they can close the lake to you at any point in time. Says you're abutting a golf course and golf courses can be dangerous, golf balls could fly and hit you in the head and. People could leave and walk on your property looking for balls, that sort of thing. Um, I, I see our disclosures in this property being a, a slightly different, obviously, we don't have a golf course. Uh, but this gun club disclosure i- is one of them, we've agreed to that, they've requested that we advise, um. Uh, residents, uh, of the proximity of the club, so we'll include that as one of the disclosures, uh, we mandate the builders and then they just add it. At, at every single closing, uh, and we, it's also included in the homeowner documents that are recorded on title before anybody buys a lot. It doesn't stop everybody from complaining, but it creates a legal basis, even though the gun club I believe is cur- is protected by law anyway. Um, it, it provides a simple basis to really eliminate disputes pretty quickly, um, so that's that. Uh, quantity, another issue I've heard that, the, my last number I heard was there's forty two hundred homes built and I, I don't know. That, we, we have a couple of people that are very creative with addition, maybe. Um, I'm going to show you that this, sorry, it's small in the top corner, you'll see one in a second, it's a. We went back and pulled the annual building permits in the last four years in Spalding, your highest year is three hundred and eighty three, your lowest is three thirty five. Um, so that's three hundred and fifty eight average, um. Here's the zoned houses right now that are zoned in this whole area, the only one that's being built right now, let's see, Sun City Beach Street. And Grayson Park are being built. Uh, Teamman Point, you're aware of, is D R Horton at, at Teamman and Smoke, uh, Spalding Village is approved for sixty seven. Um, residential lots there. Uh, Big Pines is the LGI project that's further down Smoke Road that's still pending sewer, which needs some review and approval between us and then. Probably more importantly, this Spalding County Water Authority. Uh, and Meadow Glen, uh, which is Lennar Homes under construction right now, most of this stuff was zoned, I think. Yeah, the exception to Teamman Point, no, all of those were zoned before two thousand and ten. So nothing's been zoned in the last fourteen years other than Teamman Point, so you added one two hundred and ninety five lot project. Um, what we've done is taken them, of course, Sun City's a lot of houses to go, there's still fourteen hundred or more homes to go. But the pace, it sells at about a hundred and seven homes average per year, a little higher, a little lower. Um, and so you project out the time it takes to get land. Develop, built, houses built, and then what a sales rate will be. And, uh, and this is a, a sort of rough projection of how those homes will come through your system. Now, this is occupancies, so obviously the permits will come six months prior, but you can see with the current, uh, stuff, you don't hit a peak. Really until two forty one and twenty thirty, and then if you add our North Tallaliga project. Um, we've assumed ninety eight sales, fifty in the active adult section and forty eight. Uh, for a month in the, um, traditional product for ninety eight total, and you can see how that increases the number. With all of that, you're still at and below, uh, where you are now, so I don't see a huge flood or impact at, at any level, both on your ability to process or handle them. Everybody good if I move on?
That's pretty powerful. Thank you.
It, it, it's, growth is evolution, you're just not going to have a thousand homes built in one neighborhood at one point, it doesn't.
Backup ones like, David, is this pretty well for how you see it too, give and take a little?
That was, uh, yeah, I mean, Sun City Peachtree is the biggest by far, uh, provider of new home permits.
I thi- I think Sun City Peachtree has a range, I think its low year is probably eighty nine, the highest is about one twenty three, I think. We, obviously, we get their sewer tap, so we track their, their sales closely every, every month, um, it, it peaks and valleys a little bit, um. Uh, but yeah, this, I think this also assumes a fairly good, consistent, current. Selling market, somewhere in here, we'll have some downturns, we'll have high interest rates, we'll have some, you know. We'll have issues that will probably slow this down, um, so I think this is probably a good projection to. Use for an aggressive pace, uh, it very easily could be slower, if you have a two thousand and eight type event or even something half that bad. You'll have a big gap in this. Uh, tree preservation also i- i- is, is a big one, al- always a concern, um. This is probably a good visual to show you, this is actually Heron Bay that, um. The yellow line is roughly the, the boundary between them, so that's, this is all Henry County, but it's very close to the Spalding border. Um, that's mini farms all around it, uh, acre lots, and that's the neighborhood. What you tend to see is when these smaller, you know, two, three, fo- four, five acre lots are, for the most part, they end up like this, not everybody does it. But the clear cut huge amount of, of, I don't know, grass, field, whatever, um, they're used for, um. So, you can see through the neighborhood, the tree preservation zones that divide the neighborhoods from pod to pod, which are important, we have them all through our plan. But also around the periphery. And there, that, that for example, this is, um, this is Amelia Road itself, uh, just right up here is our proposed property. Um, so this little bit of green trees here is one, and on this side it's all field, which is where the, uh, uh, active adult neighborhood is on that side. Um, a couple of people that spoke here live in this area, and you can see again that the concern are about the trees, which are the trees. For a large part on somebody else's property. Uh, we, we, we actually, I skipped it, I have slides later, but it's probably not worth getting into, but when it comes into the protection buffer zones. Along the lake as well, we've been told that, um, we're fine using the two hundred foot, that's not enough, there's. Houses being built all down s- uh, Apple and Sam Solomon, where you get the creek, with the big lots where they own all the way to. The, what should be open space, people's yards tend to creep, they build, they build, the houses get built back, the yards get cleared deeper. We were going down this, there's probably five or six of them that are all within a hundred, have cleared within a hundred feet of the high water zone. Uh, which we wouldn't be allowed to, we, we'd have to be two hundred feet away. Um, it, it's, it's human tendency to clean or an open land, that sort of thing, uh, that's part of the design concept, the smaller lots. When you do the bigger lots, whether it's two acre, one acre, and you don't need the open spaces, you don't have to have the buffers and all that's in the zoning. Those lots are du- designed right to the center line of creeks, they're designed right to the outer edge of property, and then you get people, um, that, that privately own all that land. And it gets much more prone to getting cleared, uh, unlike if you put all that land in communal open space with a preservation covenant on it. It stays trees and never gets cut, and that sort of takes you back to the, to that picture there. Um, all, all the green land that you see there is, is with the trees all winding through the neighborhood and that one is all, um. All, all community HOA land, so homeowners just don't have the right to go in and cut it and clear it. Uh, tax revenue versus road cost, one quick slide, this, this is sort of interesting as it goes to residential lots. Uh. In, in a rural county like Effingham or like Spalding, it's a house, it counts as a house, yes, you have whatever it is, twenty eight thousand. Homes, I think, something like that in the county, uh, a huge amount of them are rural lots, which are great, but they also have a lot of road frontage. And a lot of maintenance cost as a result, so we use, we took the Amelia Road section basically from the county line. Um, down to the end of Amelia Road, that's fifty eight parcels totaling nine hundred and fifty two acres. We picked a comparable pot in Sun City just for an example, which is also fifty eight parcels. Um, it's on less land and, and reality, it's probably, that should be eighteen acres, because there's corresponding nine acres of open space somewhere that. Is preserved and not generating taxes for you. Um, that's the tax driven from it, uh, Amelia, generally, the rural land tends to be taxed a little lower, the houses are newer, they get taxed. Uh, because they're, they're sold and you, your assessor has the higher current value. You also have on the rural land some kubas and that sort of thing that lower the tax basis. Um, Sun City, in, in that particular pot, I think there's four or five that were veterans that I think have a discounted tax rate from you as well, that's taken into place there. Uh, you can see the road length difference, so it's three miles versus about, about three tenths of a mile. So you're collecting fifty thousand dollars of tax for, uh, for every mile of road in Amelia, and you're collecting six hundred and thirty six thousand dollars of tax. For every mile in Sun City. Now, there's more services, yes, but you're talking fifty eight houses, fifty eight families in both ca- both scenarios. So, I, I don't disagree, rural, rural living is awesome, for, for me, I, my balance is either urban city or rural would be my two choices. Um, but, uh, it, it does come at a cost and I heard the. Build up of long-term maintenance issues that you have here, road repairs all over the county, I lost track of the number, it was a big number though. Um, it's a lot, and, and even something like the paving of Amelia Road, uh, is in dispute, it's even within the own, their own community. Because, and came up at the meeting, some people absolutely want it paved and, and. That, that's all they want, other people want it left dirt and more bumps the better, because it's more rural and less people will use it. It's, it's, there's always a trade off on those things, um, and I know you have your own process for determining where and when you spend money, um. But, but that, uh, becomes challenging. Uh, and then, something else that just keeps coming up, is, is just, don't rezone, just don't rezone them. Make them do what's allowed under the existing R two zoning, um, these, these are not the nicest slides, but. I, I, and before I do this, I don't want to do this, not a threat, not anything, just to, to discuss and address. The people's concern of this is what they want. Um, as it relates to your, this is your R two zoning. Two acre lots, minimum, using septic and drilled well, minimum two hundred foot frontage lots, a lot more road per lot. You're allowed to do a two family dwelling per lot, so duplex, can be a manufactured home, minimum fourteen hundred square foot heated. So you're talking two seven hundred foot units, okay, per lot, so on five hundred and forty acres, I'm going to guess we could probably get. After you take away roads, probably get two hundred and fifty, um, two acre lots, uh, plus the road waste. That's, that's the lots using up every inch, because it's being built to the creeks, built, being built to the reservoir buffer everywhere. Um, on those two hundred and fifty lots with duplexes, you're talking five hundred units. Here's a, here's, here's a nice actually, brand new, uh, duplex manufactured home that fits in your code. There's the floor plan, two bedroom, I mean, you all, we've all seen this, a lot of us have lived in them at times. Um. Also in the R two property, there you go, there's the count, you're talking five hundred septic tanks, five hundred wells. Surrounding all, all of that preservation line, always concerned about groundwater and aquifer, you've got five hundred septic tanks feeding into the groundwater. And you've got five hundred deep water wells into the lower aquifer level. Not necessarily the greatest thing, now, they all work great when they're new, absolutely. And then we all know, I think there's multiple neighborhoods all over Spalding and Griffin. Where septic tank neighborhoods have totally failed, they're leaching, contaminating, and, and I know you're trying to figure out how to solve it at, 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 at multiple locations. Maybe not the best choice, um, also with the R two zoning, there's no open space requirements, no amenities are required. No sidewalks, no street trees, and no rental restrictions, so you're talking a five hundred home rental community right now. So that, I just, for everybody here, it's important to not just throw out that, what's allowed in the zoning. And then that's just this R two, but that kind of thinking can happen in multiple zoning cat- categories around the county. Um. That's, that's why w- w- we've sort of ended up with this plan, we're, we, we don't have a desire to build that, obviously, um, I, I think. I'm sure we'd rent them all. Um, but I, I think the push i- in the comp plan, I mean, I heard a lot of people say they want it, they, they're not against development, they just want to see quality development. Um, I've never really got clear answers as to what quality development is, I, I get sometimes. Big lots, which for people, some people means two acres, one acre, some people means five or ten, um. House sizes are, you know, what's a big house for somebody, and, and as we all know, two thousand foot can be a god awful ugly house if it's built poorly. With no standards, so trying, I've tried to create a. So trying, I've tried to create a neighborhood that has community, that has character, uh, that has pedestrian connectivity, that has the commercial districts and the senior housing that'll uh, generate extra tax revenue for you instead of the residential, and at a price point uh, that will generate tax revenue that will, uh, hopefully offset and exceed and, and fill some of the gaps i- in your overall budget together with all the revenues for the, uh, uh, Water Authority as well. So that's kind of basically it, I think. Um, I think there's maybe a couple other questions, um. Uh, that came up, I'm just seeing if there's things that I've, I've missed here. Um. May- maybe the big one is, is just the, the trustee agreement with the county, uh, on the sewer. Um, I'll draw, that came up in the three o'clock meeting. Um, I was actually late for that meeting, so I was with Joseph, uh, Johnson, uh, updating him on all that. We're basically putting together a pretty detailed package of information for him, which is a listing of every piece of equipment on the sewer plant, uh, the age of it, the, the, uh, replacement, you know, updating the replacement reserve, cash flow management. Um, so that when we sit down with them, that he'll be able to grasp it really quickly and understand the, the, uh, scoping issues. Um, I think we're pretty much in sync. Should they not, you know, we, we have no problem working with them, we'd like to, Joseph's great. If for any reason they choose not to be the trustee, we've been approached by a couple different private utility companies uh, that are also willing to take on that position, but we're gonna start with, uh, the county and hopefully with the county water authority. A- and hope that works out. I think there's some, some benefit to working jointly with them.
How much longer do you think that's gonna be?
Uh, we'll probably get him the whole package, information, sets of documents, uh, everything, I would say. I, I'm, I'm gone till the twenty-fifth, so probably ten days after that, so you're probably looking about, you know, whatever, April fifth, sixth, some, somewhere in that range. Um. Everything's ready. I don't think, I just went through a lot of detail with him on a whole range of things. I don't think we have any, um, conflict whatsoever. There's a few um, technical things that between us, I think we, we can work out and, and are essentially in agreement with. Um. So yeah, I don't see, I don't see it being a particularly, uh, problematic, uh, problematic issue.
Other questions for him? David, anything that, uh, you want us to make sure we understand from his sophisticated talk?
I think beyond what we've already said, I don't have anything further.
Okay. Commissioners?
Are these the single-family units, are they two, two garage, a two-car driveways?
Yeah, two-car driveway and two-car garage. So a- as part of this process, we get asked a million things by yourselves, sometimes at meetings, planning commission, neighbors, your TJ and your roads department, I mean, David, nu- e- e- everybody has different things, um, that are issues and concern. Um, so we put together a really uh, detailed list of things, of conditions that we've essentially agreed to, to all these various people. Provided them to, uh, to David, and then I think he, as I understand it, he's taken them, and I, I don't know if, if expanded, added to them, whatever. Uh, basically to try to document, uh, for the record, everything that we've, uh, decided and agreed, and, and actually, some of the stuff that we've proposed in there isn't even discussed in this. For example, things like, in, in each of the two types of homes, active adult and traditional houses, you have a minimum, but you don't want all the houses clustering at the bottom. You don't want three or four hundred houses all the same, small. We like to build them and have different price points, so you have variation between the communities, so you can have something on the more affordable end for your first responders, nurses, teachers, that sort of thing, all the way up to the doctors and business people, I mean, who can afford the most expensive. So what we did was created tiers, although you, we have a minimum, we've said, uh, uh, rough, in round numbers, roughly a third can be from that minimum to a, a three hundred feet higher, and then the next third have to be bigger than that, and the next third are even bigger. And we've done the same with active adult. Uh, and one of the things that came up was the driveways. Um, I think you have an issue somewhere in the county with driveways, but um, the request is to make sure that, uh, the minimum driveway standard is twenty-three and a half feet by eighteen feet wide, which is two cars plus two cars in the garage. Every house will have four car parking. Sorry, that was your first question.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I follow up on
Absolutely.
he said on R two? I wanna give, eh, you and also the folks who are here, a little history on R two, on that property. That property, the bulk of the Wilson property has been zoned R two since the mid-sixties. And at that point, we had three residential districts. R one was single-family housing, R two was duplexes, R three was multifamily. We actually took action, and, and you could put it on at that point, uh, n- uh, no minimum lot size. That changed somewhat in nineteen ninety-four, when the current ordinance was adopted. Excuse me. It at least required an acre minimum lot, but it was still a duplex district, but you could put a single-family dwelling in it. We attempted to remove duplexes and manufactured homes from R two by creating a district called R two A. And I will tell you that I do not understand why, nor do I have any information that suggests it should be this way. Why a duplex and a manufactured home as a structure in R two remains today. Those changes were made around nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine. So I have operated on the assumption that we have protected that area from duplexes and manufactured homes for the past twenty-five, twenty-seven years. And, um, this action has brought a, that, that to, that to my attention and, and to yours. But that's the reason that property was zoned R two. We also encourage people in order to eliminate substandard development to rezone their properties to new districts that we created, and one of them was AR two. And to their credit, the people, along with the Wilsons, who are along Amelia Road, came in with a single comprehensive rezoning application around the mid, late to mid, mid to late nineties, and zoned it to R two, which went to a five acre minimum. So that's the historical basis for what's out there now, and, uh, what, what can be developed. And over time, we have attempted to restrict and make it, um, make it such that's true substandard development could not go in out there. Uh, so when I learned that there were provisions in R two that still had those two land uses, I was stunned. So we do need to correct that, even if this is not approved. That needs to be corrected and properly.
That's, yeah, that's part of the changes, of the many changes that we're doing, yes, we, we saw that.
We're working that.
You know, one thing, the document that we worked hard on, myself and the zoning attorney, that is very comprehensive as far as the conditions, very specific, so it, it tries to atone for some things that were not good in Grayson Park and things of that nature by being very specific, very really honing some stuff down, so we have that document for you as well.
All right, we have.
There was also one other point, there was also a discussion about variance and hardships. In twenty twenty-two, the Georgia Legislature passed House Bill fourteen oh five, which made a variance application that is part of a rezoning, a legislative act. And as a result, under our ordinance, a variance, when it is joined with a rezoning or a special exception application, is treated as part of the rezoning, and it is governed by the amendment process of Section four fourteen. So the traditional variance requirements no longer apply except for a standalone variance.
Thank you, State Health.
Okay, now, we have, uh, four. Make sure, we've got four things we're voting on with, uh, uh, this, this application, correct? I mean, I make sure we're all talking on the same sheet of music. Okay, we're gonna vote them, as far as I'm concerned, one right after the other, to be able to do that. All right, let's take the, uh, first one, twenty-four thirty-two Z. You've read them all, right?
I've, I only read application number eight.
I'll read, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, 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 all right, we've read eight. All right, we're gonna vote eight now. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, uh, rezoning for, uh, R two AR to AR, uh, AR two, uh, to Village Node?
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve a rezoning from R two and AR two to Village Node with the conditions as listed in the s- by staff. Did, did he, uh, while I was out, did he read all the conditions? Okay, will you?
Well, I can do those, but the resolution takes those and greatly expands it into, how many pages of it, I can?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah, let's not read all of them.
Sixteen restrictions on the approval of the development, sixteen pages of restrictions.
The resolution of my conditions agree that he greatly built upon the conditions with other details that need to be in there.
Can we just cite and include those?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't have all of them, but I'm, I'm aware that condition specifically.
David, could you read the conditions, the, the s- the short version of the conditions into the record, please?
I can do that. Hang on, one second. All right, this was the Cliff Note version of the conditions, which, again, the basic framework of his resolution is built upon this. Should the board choose to approve the rezoning application, the following minimum approval conditions shall apply. Number one, the following development conditions shall apply collectively to the combined property, which includes the following tax parcels. Two zero 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 one, zero zero one, two zero 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 one, zero zero one B, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one. Two zero one, zero one, zero zero one A, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one B, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one D, and two zero one, zero zero one F. The approved concept plan references dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any increase in area or lot yield to this approved plan shall require additional approval by the planning commission and board of commissioners. Number two, with the exception of any approved variances of certain development standards, all design standards, including architectural, streetscaping, parking, and amenity areas of the Village Node District should be adhered to. Number three, Spalding County shall review and approve exhibits of the design of the exterior architecture of the proposed homes and other principal buildings within the entire development. The approved exhibits of the architectural styles and features for the development shall be provided to and adhered to by all future contractors slash developers building within the development prior to building permits being issued. Number four, street trees, entrance landscaping, amenity landscaping, and commercial tract landscaping shall be subject to approval by the Community Development Director. Number five, a written, a copy of the written agreement of the final G dot required improvements to State Route one fifty-five, i.e. North McDonough Road shall be provided to the Community Development Office. Number six, the developer shall install at his own expense a southbound left turn lane on State Highway one fifty-five, which will turn into the main entrance of the community across from Johnson Road. This intersection will be the location of the primary traffic light serving the property. The length of the southbound left turn lane will be mandated by G dot for the G dot criteria for a fifty-five mile per hour road. In addition, the developer will install other deceleration and acceleration lanes as mandated by G dot. Number seven, the portion of Johnson Road fronting the development shall be paved according to county standards up to the intersection of State Route one fifty-five, i.e. North McDonough Road. Number eight, the non-signalized intersection from the development onto State Route one fifty-five should be right in, right out. Number nine, Amelia Road shall be subject to the following improvements by the developer. A, donate right-of-way forty feet from the center line of the existing road on each side for an eighty-foot total right-of-way width. B, pave the portion of Amelia Road that abuts the development property to county standards. C, install a paved A cell, D cell lane at the entrance of any residential village pod that accesses via Amelia Road. D, provide a crosswalk across Amelia Road and, and impervious walking trails from the residential village pod on Amelia Road to the residential village pod directly to the west. Number ten, per Henry County Water Authority standards, a property that is east of Amelia Road, tax parcel two zero zero, zero one, zero zero one A, shall provide a two hundred foot wide, no impervious surfaces buffer from the seven hundred and twenty foot full pool elevation line of Long Branch Reservoir. Number eleven, per Henry County Water Authority standards, in any location where residential lot directly abuts the Henry County Water Authority preservation property, the voter must install a five-foot tall black chain-link fence along the shared boundary line. Number twelve, the total development shall contain a maximum of one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven single-family detached homes plus a maximum of two hundred and fifty senior multifamily units, i.e. senior apartments, assisted living, plus the retail center site. Number thirteen, for single-family detached homes that are not age-targeted, no more than thirty percent can be less than eighteen hundred square feet, and at least thirty-five percent must be twenty-one hundred square feet or larger. A running tally should be maintained and updated phase by phase on each subsequent final plot. Number fourteen, the developer shall work with the county to provide housing assistance, support for first responders, teachers, and medical support personnel to encourage such people to reside in the county, work in the county, and remain a part of the county's core support infrastructure. Number fifteen, four-foot wide concrete sidewalk shall be installed by the developer at its own expense along both sides of all interior streets within the development, with a minimum of six-foot wide landscape strip between the back of the curb and sidewalk. Four-foot wide concrete sidewalk shall also be provided on Amelia Road frontage of the development to county standards, and along the entire State Route one fifty-five frontage of the development to G dot standards. Sixteen, a streetlight district shall be established for development per county standards. Finally, seventeen, existing cemetery shall be permanently protected per appendix N of the Spalding County Code, abandoned cemetery, borough ground protection ordinance.
And the documents we gave you yesterday, which are entitled Conditions of Rezoning, Special Exception, and Variance Approval, should you decide to approve it, should simply be added on to the conditions that are in his staff report en masse. That permits you to approve, that if you choose to approve it, that permits you to adopt. Everything that David just said with more formal, with, with a little more formality in that document.
Including some driveway lengths and other issues.
Correct.
Um, just, Brian, you're good with all, everything he read.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with everything. I, I do disagree with two things. I'm willing to accept them, but I don't think they're ideal for the plan. One is the sidewalks on the frontage on Amelia. The intent there was to create those mini farm lots and make them look like the rest of the frontage. And I think just building a sidewalk that'll just stop at the next large lots doesn't really serve any purpose. It makes it look a little bit too suburban, when the intention was a rural look. Um, so that's one. It's not the co- I don't mind deploying the money somewhere else into parks or whatever, it's just not a, I don't think it's good. And the other one is, um, along one fifty-five. I just don't think sidewalks directly beside one fifty-five down to the river serve any purpose. I think it's really critical to be able to walk across one fifty-five. So when you have the lights of crosswalks, and developing that is, I think is really important, so that people can come across the commercial, that sort of thing. But just running a sidewalk down one fifty-five, our intention on one fifty-five is to not have the look like Henry County with all the junk and everything visible, but to kind of berm it and plant it, and basically make everything go away. So you'll see that, you'll come down and it'll be, or that liquor store will be there. You'll have a little bit, there'll be the senior housing project, and then vegetation, the shopping center, and then just vegetation again, all the way down to the river. Um, the sidewalk is, would be fine, but I don't know who would walk on it, and I don't know that it really serves any functional purpose, that's all. So, that's, I'd be the only one that I would remove.
Those two?
It's, there's varying opinions.
How do you feel about that?
I, I, I just, I don't, uh, people would be walking on the road. People, we're requiring everyone who is building housing or development to have sidewalks if they, on the s- s- facing the street that they're there, so for me.
Um, I'm good without it.
Okay, Brian?
I mean, if we're requiring everybody to have sidewalks, I mean, we need sidewalks. I mean, you gotta look into the future. I mean, it's going, there's gonna be a commercial there, eh, somebody else might wanna walk to the, from another development to, all that commercial stuff be gonna be over there, so.
Liquor store?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, James.
I, I think Brian has been extremely helpful in, uh, you- I, I think Brian has been extremely helpful in, uh, you, in part of your presentation, you showed us some of the design standards that we're, we're uh, hoping to implement countywide. I think that's gonna be very important. Um, I think you've been, uh, extremely flexible as far as what you could do and what you want to do versus allowing, you know, sort of these compromised positions. Um, a- all that said, I, I, I don't think I've made any bones about this that I, I want our building and zoning code changed for the entire county. Um, I don't want Grayson Park, and I certainly don't want any more Waterfords on Ellis. Um, I, so, for, for me, the stand that I'm taking, again, I don't take this in any way personal, but I'm, I'm not gonna vote for, and I haven't tonight, and I'm, I'm not even uh, gonna vote for any kind of development until that's part of our code, until that's done. Been asking since twenty eighteen for that to get done, and we've gone through multiple law firms and in-house and out. So, again, I, I, this isn't any kind of slide against you or
No, it's okay.
So, I, you know, I, I tried to put it off and table and so they give us more time, but.
I, I appreciate that. I, 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 I respect that position totally. I'd, I'd have to say that I think these guys have done a pretty diligent job in trying to make sure that whatever is promised and committed and everything else is enforceable. I think that's the key thing, whether I'm here, whether they're long gone. Whoever's reading it, that it ties to the land and the promises that have been made to, to residents, that sort of thing are uh, a- and just the design intent is, is enforceable, and I, I think this long set of conditions, I think, is probably something that'll be valuable for you guys to do just on anything going forward, because there's a million of those little details that um, can, can eat you alive if they're not thought out upfront, so.
But again, I just wanna make sure.
If you get them in the ordinance, it's easier and better.
It's, it's, it's not you, uh, you know, when Bob Dixon came and pitched to my family when I was eight years old, Waterford on Ellis, and said, "Look at how awesome it's gonna be. Look at these drawings." And we all went, "Oh, okay, why would he lie to us? People don't come in and lie."
Mm-hmm.
And.
I, I, I've said that in, with people, the name, but I said, "It's irrelevant what I say, whether you trust me or not. It doesn't matter because it's gotta be enforced whether I'm here or not," and, um, so documenting it, I think, is absolutely the way to go, so. And, and ultimately changing your ordinance is, I totally agree.
Well, and the same thing, it wasn't Bob, it was a guy who, once Bob was done, he sold it. And that guy didn't do it, and it was the, you know what I mean, like, I, I'm not trying to throw Bob under the bus either, but it's the same thing.
Dixon built about six houses that were quality houses and what the intent was. The property was then sold, and it was dumbed down. That's what we have to protect against if this type thing is going to be approved.
Amen.
So, Mr. Chairman, my motion is to include all of those requirements, all, um, all those stipulations along with the sidewalks on Amelia and one fifty five, as well as a condition that no construction is to begin until Minerva has done whatever they're gonna do with their trustee.
Until trustee issue is settled finally.
Uh, yeah. I mean, that, that, that's, that's what I got.
Okay.
And does that include the commissioner, the other conditions of zoning special exception and variance approval that we reviewed this afternoon?
Oh, I thought we were just doing number one, right?
We, we are, but that covers all of them, so we can do that with each one, and it'll be okay.
That is, that is the intent of the motion.
Right.
Okay, alright, Commissioner Wallace, did you second that?
I second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Two, all those opposed, raise your hand.
There's three.
Uh, three, excuse me, opposed is two, motion carries. Alright. Next. I'm sorry?
Well, it's the same thing, so.
With that slide, we're, we're done with that one. We should be going to the next one. Alright.
Application twenty-four thirty-one S, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at Owl Minerva Land LLC. Thirty-three twenty, North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres located in landlot one forty-seven of the second land district. Parcel number two zero one, zero one, zero zero one D. The applicant is requesting special exception for an age-targeted, age fifty-five and older living facility to be permitted, possibly including independent living facility, assisted living facility, personal care home, nursing home, or seniors apartments, which shall be subject to a maximum height limitation of sixty feet with an approved fire sprinkler system.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, let me nail this down a little bit more about what exactly this is. Um, this is the applicant's description. Generally, this will all be under one roof. It's possible there may be two or three buildings, but the typical design is all under one roof with segmented wings or floors that provide different levels of care and services. They basically include independent living apartments, plus assisted living units, plus additional levels of care beyond that, including respite care, memory care, or nursing home care. In the first step, it's essentially an apartment with a full kitchen, but there are additional services offered such as a common dining area, movie theater, events, recreation, so on and so forth. Then the resident can move into the next sections, which have higher levels of care as needed. Generally, those units do not have kitchens or laundry, so um, this is basically for essentially aging in place to a certain demographic, and that's it.
But you also have conditions of approval on that.
Correct.
I didn't hear that.
He also has, there are also conditions of approval that are listed on.
Yes. So maybe quickly read those. There's, there's less of those, that's good news. Um, duh, 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 with the exception of any approved variances of certain development standards, all applicable design standards, including architectural, streetscaping, parking, and amenity areas of the Village Node District should be adhered to. Two, final site plan and landscape plans should be shoved to review by the Community Development Director. Three, no direct access to North McDonough Road, i.e. State Route one fifty five for this piece. Four, the proposed two hundred and fifty unit senior housing facility may include senior independent living units, assisted living, and memory care. It may be built in a single building or multiple buildings, but shall not exceed the two hundred and fifty total units.
And then those are also enhanced by the document we reviewed with you, provided you yesterday and reviewed this afternoon.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-four thirty-one S.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any more discussion?
With the stipulations, as well as the stipulation about the trustee.
Okay, and your second is with that, too. Alright, any more discussion? Uh, just, you're good with all the stuff that was?
That's what I'm agreeing on.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. I, uh, four, uh, Brian, did you vote with us? Four, four of us. Are you, you're against this? Okay, uh, four, four, one against. Uh, all, excuse me, all those against, please raise your hand. Thank you. Uh, alright, so four with it, four, once again. Excuse me, four yeses, one no. Alright?
Mr. Chairman, number ten, application twenty-four one-three V D. Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at Owl Minerva Land LLC. Thirty-three twenty, North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres located in landlot one one five, one one six, one four one, one four two, one four three, one four seven, one four eight, and one four nine of the second land district. Parcel numbers two zero one, zero one, zero zero one, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one A, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one B, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one D, two zero 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 one, zero zero one, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero six, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero one B, and two zero one, zero one, zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow minimum single-family house size of one thousand two hundred square feet if the dwellings are age-targeted for individuals age fifty-five and older.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Our conditions for this as well.
Motion to approve with conditions as listed by staff and the additional, uh, dis- uh, requirement for the trustee agreement.
I'll second it.
Alright, uh, do we wanna have him read them?
Yes.
Okay, please read them into the record.
Alright, again, this is for the reduced house size for the, um, age-targeted fifty-five-plus, uh, lots. Number one, with the exception of any approved variances of certain development standards, all design standards, including architectural, streetscaping, parking, and amenity areas of the Village Node District should be adhered to. Number two, for single-family detached homes that are age-targeted to active adults aged fifty-five plus, the minimum heated house size should be twelve hundred square feet, with the condition that no more than thirty percent can be less than fifteen hundred square feet, and at least thirty-five percent must be eighteen hundred square feet or larger. A running tally should be maintained and updated phase by phase on each subsequent final plat. Or three, the variance for reduced house size, minimum twelve hundred heated square feet, is intended only for active fifty-five-plus adults demographic. And these particular houses should only be located on the forty-foot-wide lots as shown on the concept plan dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Compliance with HUD's regulatory requirements for age verification of residence, which may include surveys, affidavits, or other methods to determine residents' ages should be implemented.
David, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think they were doing the senior housing building one, and those were the conditions for the.
Probably just did senior housing.
It, they, a couple of them sound similar at the beginning.
Okay, great, sorry.
This is the variance.
Okay, one, you're good with all, all that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Alright, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
You already have it, sir.
Oh, sorry, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, all those opposed, two, motion carries.
Item number eleven, application two-four dash one-three V D. Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at Owl Minerva Land LLC. Thirty-three twenty, North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres located in landlot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the second land district. Parcel numbers two zero one, zero one, zero zero one, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one A, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one B, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one D, two zero 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 one, zero zero one, two zero 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 one, zero zero six, two zero 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 one, zero zero one B, and two zero one, zero one, zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow minimum single-family lot frontage and lot width of forty feet if the dwellings are age-targeted for individuals aged fifty-five and older.
Can we, can we go back over, what does age-targeted mean?
Fifty-five and over.
But age-targeted, not age-restricted, so like, we're gonna advertise it for fifty-five and older, but anyone can buy it?
Well, we're, we're requiring it to be age-restricted.
Right, it's based on HUD.
I just.
I do have a question, too. So I know that the development, the part of the development that is gonna be on Amelia Road is supposed to be fifty-five active, correct?
Correct.
Is there another fifty-five and active section pod in there as well?
Correct, the, everything, everything across the top.
Okay, so up by the pink amenity area. So those would be the.
But yeah, everything that's abutting the Henry County line all the way from one fifty-five over to.
Okay, so those would be the ones that we're looking at in this variance.
There's three of them, right?
Three areas.
A, F, and G? I, I'm not looking at the thing.
That's the case, yes.
That's the minimum, and then it's designed that if we can find somebody that wants to do even more, we can go into the traditional ones as well.
As the screen is showing up there.
Okay, so it's the top portion that's closest to Henry County, but the actual active fifty-five is C and F, and then A is the medical, personal care area, correct?
That's below A.
That's below A.
Yeah, it's the area between A and B.
The, the three across the top, A, F, and G, because of the variance you, the variance requested for the lot width, those have to be age-restricted in order to comply with the variance.
So that would be A, F, and G?
Correct.
Okay, that, I understand.
The option is there if somebody wanted to come in and do additional.
A larger house with a larger front.
Correct, or if they wanted to do an additional pod or neighborhood of, of senior active adult, they could do that, subject to all the other conditions that are required for the fifty-five plus.
But these orange-coared forty-foot-wide lots are only confined to those three up top.
Okay.
That's correct.
And, and do we have conditions for those, for the, this, uh, application?
Number one, with the exception of any approved variances of certain development standards, all design standards, including architectural, streetscaping, parking, and amenity areas of the Village Node District should be adhered to. Number two, for single-family detached homes that are age-targeted to active adults aged fifty-five plus, the minimum lot frontage measured at the front setback line should be forty feet, with the condition that no more than thirty percent can be less than fifty feet, and at least thirty-five percent must be sixty feet wide or larger. A running tally should be maintained and updated phase by phase on each subsequent final plat. And number three, variance for reduced lot width, minimum forty foot, forty feet, is intended only for the active adults fifty-five-plus demographic, and these lots are as shown on the concept plan dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Brian, you're good with all those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, mostly to approve, Mr. Chairman, um, application.
Twenty-four thirteen V D.
Oh, yeah, somebody else make a motion. I don't have the number.
Alright, um, I'll make the motion, twenty-four thirteen V D.
Okay.
With, with conditions.
With conditions, and I'll second it.
In the trustee resolution?
With the trustee resolution included.
That was Reggie's motion, right, Reggie?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's what you said, you just repaired.
We have.
Repeating what you were saying, that's.
Yes, yes.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, all opposed. Two, motion carries. David, any other business that we need to talk about tonight?
I'm all, all talked up.
I'm sorry?
I am all talked up.
Mr. Chairman, I would like, if we can amend the agenda, to have a discussion, um, about James's, um, uh, initial motion that he amended the agenda about. I, I really do think there needs to be a moratorium, certainly on Village Node development in that area. I'm not really sure how to define what any massive, any other massive, if someone came in and wanted to do an R two, it would still be five hundred houses, but I think, I don't know that we can change things by then, but I certainly think we're at a place where either we need to say Village Node doesn't work for us anymore, or we have not, we're not able to do it in that quadrant of the county. So, I mean, that's just my suggestion, um, that, that we look at going forward, doing that. And I mean, we could only have a moratorium for ninety days anyway, right?
You can have a moratorium for a reasonable time. Usually, that equates to ninety days. Now, usually, that's the standard.
You made a motion to amend the agenda to include a discussion on a moratorium.
But we can't just sit here and talk about it, right? That doesn't have to be on the agenda, does it?
But you can't take action on it unless we amend the agenda.
Alright, let's just go ahead.
That's what I'm saying.
James, can you second? No, go ahead, I'll second.
I'll second.
Alright, we'll se- we'll have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Uh, five, zero, motions, uh, the agenda is, uh, amended. Alright, let's go.
So, so as I look at the, the map that we have, our future land use map and what our, our comprehensive plan says, um, I, I realize that, um, you know, when you're, when you're making these plans, you really don't know what it looks like. Um, but my concern is that we do have the rest of the county, and I know that there is an issue. I mean, it's, it's like anything else. If you have sewer, if you build sewer, they will come. Um, but not for all of the reasons, many of the reasons that people had that, that came here tonight, because in terms of this development, as it, as it happens, I do believe that we will be able to create a, do our infrastructure to be able to meet those demands. But my concern is that if we've decided that we want a certain percentage of the land in Spalding County to remain rural, then we really need to look back at the map, because we got three-quarters of the county that fits that picture to some degree. But we, in, in the comprehensive plan, we said we wanted development out sixteen, and we wanted it in that northern quadrant where we put the Village Node. So, I think it's fair that, to say that I believe that it's saturated, especially with us. especially with what's, what's on, on that side, and that, for that reason, not necessarily a moratorium on development within the county, but certainly, I don't wanna say District Five, but certainly.
I don't have any problem with saying District Five.
Northeast quadrant, I think that anything that is not basic R-two or whatever, certainly on the Village Node, I think that we should put a moratorium on anything large that's being, going in the northern quadrant until we figure out if we want to amend the comprehensive plan. I know that's a whole thing, it's not that easy to just jump up and amend it, but I think that we can take some precautions, because we obviously need to look at this, and growth is not gonna stop. If, if you, if we looked at nineteen and forty-one, they're here. They're already here. So if we don't provide the infrastructure, they will provide it, and they will annex us, and we'll end up on the other side without that control. So if we're wanting to do something in different areas in the county, then we need to go back and look at where we want that to happen.
Yeah, let me make a comment about it for everybody. I'm taking a hell of a beating, so everybody knows up in the District Five for what's going on, and that's because we all agreed back in twenty seventeen and in twenty-two that we would put everything here, so everybody else would be much better shape. I understand that, I'm willing to take that, because that's how we keep the rural county looking rural, all except for one little area up there. So I under, I, I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with those doing it in the, uh, District Five, or doing it countywide. I don't have a problem with either one of those, especially if we're gonna do Village Node. Village Node's pretty well hard for us to take a look at, and we need to take some time to look at it. But I don't have a problem on either one of those to hold off and say, let's take a look where we are. I'm moving off of the way we last talked about, we're gonna put it up in Clay's area, and he's just gonna have to take the beating.
So, so I think that what, what I would be feeling, if I were the, the people who came here tonight, is I look at that map, and if, if Village Node is here, and Village Node is here, what would stop the next person that comes next to you? Even though that area is designated on the map as remaining R-two median density, the worry would be what will happen when the next person comes and sewers there. And so for that reason, I feel like it's necessary for us to put, draw a line in the sand in that quadrant of the county. I know it needs to be something specific, and maybe we may do that somewhere else, but I just, for now, we need to do something that will stop any applications.
And, and the other side of it is.
Not, not applications that are existing.
Yeah, we can't do that part.
But any further application to come in asking for those.
You, you saw what Brian did with, uh, showing us how the building is gonna go. It is not gonna be overwhelming with the building for us. The issue is change, and we've got to be able to look and see, what do we wanna do? The tidal wave is coming, there's no question about that. Whether we're on nineteen forty-one, one-fifty-five, that wave is coming. We want planned things, this is the one that we plan to be able to do. Uh, it's got lots of stuff that I think is good for our county. And it starts the sewer up in this area, most of them by, the district does not have sewer. If you exclude, uh, Sun City, we're starting to do that. We're gonna move water around to be able to do this thing, to be able to, so there's lots of good stuff that's gonna happen. My focus is really a longer-range focus. What are we doing about grandkids? What are we gonna do about where kids are gonna live?
Yes.
We're gonna have kids, we have parents who have, living on one, two, three, four, five acres, and their kids are growing up. Where are they gonna, where are they gonna move to? They gonna move out of the county? I have three couples in my district who've had to move out of the dist-, out of the county, because they grew, their son and daughter grew up, had kids, they wanted to do something with their, with, would be their grandkids. They couldn't find land to be able to do all of it together, and they said, we're leaving. We've gotta be able to take care of longer-range plan, not just our kids today. So I, I'm, I'm with you on that, I don't have a problem with that. Now, do we wanna say just Village Nodes, or do we wanna say just District Five? You know, we're gonna meet again on the twenty-seventh, uh, week from this Thursday, to say, let's do again. We got another one of these to do again, so if we wanna think about it till then, or do we wanna do something tonight?
To, to me, if we're the ones who get to select what our community's future is gonna look like. Do we want our community to look more like Peachtree City? Or do we want our community to look more like Saranby? Or do we want it to look as chaotic as Clayton and God help us, Henry County is? Because if we do nothing, we're gonna be Clayton County, we're gonna be Henry County, and it's gonna be Bedlam. It, it, we have to, have to, have to raise our standards. Right now, and for my entire lifetime, Spalding County has been a dumping ground for, I, I mean, look, Heron Bay is relatively nice, right across the line, well, we'll just throw Grayson Park there. I mean, we're the dumping ground, and there's nothing in our ordinance that prevents it, nothing. We have to change the core ordinance. We have to say, this is the kind of building materials you can use, and not just this crap. This is the kind of insulation you have to have, and not just effectively none. You have to have these very, very high standards, and then, when you get builders who wanna come in and say, hey, I'm gonna build a nice neighborhood, you go, yeah, you have to, you don't have another choice. And then we don't get waterfront on Ellis over and over and over. You, you know what I mean? Like, if we don't do that now, very soon, we're gonna be Henry County, and everyone's gonna go, how did this happen? And I'm gonna stand here alone going, I told you so. But, uh, you know, no one, no one on either side of the aisle, no one on either side of the tracks, no one in any district, wants Spalding County to become Clayton County or to become Henry County. Nobody wants that, and yet, I've been shouting to the rafters since twenty-eighteen.
So, so Chris, I've done, I, I, you're absolutely right. But it's easy to say we don't want another, um, Codis plantation, but that was built at a time with a group of commissioners who thought that was the best route to go, just like we make decisions about what we think the best route to go is. Grayson Park, yes, I, I think it's not the best work, and I was actually relieved to know that Minerva didn't build it, because I thought they had lost their minds. However, that is our fault, that we didn't have planning and development, that we didn't have building inspectors. So, so to throw that back at, at developer is, is unfair, because we screwed that up.
Yes. No, it's, it's me putting in a moratorium. I'm gonna vote no, and that's my personal version of a moratorium. We're not ready, because that's not in there.
Can I make two, can I make two brief comments?
Not so personal against anybody or anybody.
Let's, let's talk, do we wanna try to do? I'm sorry.
Can I make two brief comments? The Village Nodes were added into the zoning ordinance in two thousand and four, in conjunction with the comp plan that was done that year. The problem I see is that Village Node was not intended to cover a wide swath of the county. It was intended to cover specific points that were intended to be mixed use. So, what you have to do, in my view, is modify the comp plan to reflect the fact that these two Village Nodes are planned, the Village, the Village Node that was at Heron Bay, and now this one, the Village Node at Sun City Peachtree is planned. And because of economic differences, I think, Brian, you would agree, that y'all have had to modify that plan because of economics of development since the recession. Now, when you do that, you do not have the entirety of the northern quadrant of the county zoned, or, I'm sorry, in the comp plan, prepared as if it's going to be a Village Node. So to that extent, I think the comp plan needs to be revised. I think it is, I think the Village Node in this particular place was defensible. But I can also tell you that I think denial of the Village Node could have been legally defensible, too, because y'all know we don't have just clear-cut choices sometimes, in most instances. But that would be, that would be my recommendation.
So, we have addressed the Village Nodes since two thousand and four, because we removed, uh, one-fifty-five and Jackson Road from the Village Node.
That's correct.
We also removed the Village Nodes from Rover's at Tella.
Correct.
And there was one other place. But, and, and at that time, when we removed those three Village Nodes, we decided that having them in the northern quadrant was where we wanted to go. So, so I, I, I hated that, two years ago, that many of these people weren't at that meeting. But, but, you know, that's what we do, you post it, and you come or you don't come. But I, but I think in looking at, just us looking at what is happening, if we feel that we've saturated that area, it's prudent for us to say that, that's it, that's it for this quadrant, that's it for District Five. And then we can go back and look at, do we wanna make it look different somewhere else in the county? Do we want to say, no, we're gonna keep fifty-eight percent of the entire land of the county rural? Then we have to pick where we want the pockets of development to happen, which means that sewer needs to come there.
Because those nodes did not develop, we substituted in essentially commercial crossroads as a substitute down-zoning, not down-zoning, but down-planning the scope of what we've got.
Yeah, I like the community crossroad stuff, like, hey, here's, you know. Community crossroads are almost like, well, but housing still follows, but it's, it's not subdivisions and stuff. For instance, Williamson's a city, but if that was inside Spalding County, we'd call it a community crossroads. I mean, it's a gas station, and a little restaurant, and a dollar show, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's, but, but then all the houses are around it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, it's, it's more than a community crossroads, but like, that's, that's what I've got in my mind, as a community crossroads. Okay, here are two highways or two major roads, you know, big intersection, and we want a gas station to be there, and then we want, you know, a restaurant, we wanna, you know, and then like, all the houses around there stop being food deserts, and stop being, you know what I mean? Like, these things, uh, a- and it's, it's good and bad. People that just wanna see trees the entire, their entire commute to downtown or whatever, but at the same time, uh, we know that growth is coming. We, we know that it's coming, um, and we can either channel it in positive ways in areas where, uh, it, you know, the county's sort of designed and ready for growth, or it's, it's just gonna happen, it's just gonna happen. I mean, look at even Fayette County. Fayette County sort of let a, let a, a leak in the dam, uh, come through, and then all of a sudden, it's, you know, they're, they're tearing down, uh, a section of their historic downtown to put a seven-hundred-unit apartment complex up, you know what I mean? And, uh, you know, and you go, wait, wait a minute, like, that's not, that's not what Fayetteville is, that's, that's what Jonesboro is, you know, like, it's a, it's a totally different, and yet, it's happening. So, the, I don't think that they're controlling it quite in the right way, but we, we, we're either ahead of it, and we're riding it like a surfboard, or washed away like a tsunami, and those are our two choices. We've, we've got to change the standard.
So, so with that being said, I would say that I would like to make a motion to, um, to, um, start a moratorium.
Ninety days?
Ninety days on, on the development of any Village Nodes, until we go back and review our comprehensive.
It would have had, it would have had no impact on this application.
I would, I'm gonna second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second, uh, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, okay. Uh, David, once back to you again, uh, anything else you've got? Uh, a zoning attorney?
Nothing else. No, sir.
County manager, uh, nothing for there. Ryan, anything from you?
Sir, I'm good.
Uh, Ms. Quinn?
Sir.
James? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, first off, thank y'all all for coming. Thank y'all all for coming, it makes a huge difference, it really does. If, if, if you thought that, uh, this was a, a, you know, a done deal, people, people changed their minds tonight. This was not how we thought the vote was gonna go, and, and, hey, guys, hey, guys, 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 you've been so great, so far, like, come on. Um, please come back when, when we're setting the mileage rate. Please come back when we're setting the mileage rate. Please come back when we're talking about the budget. Uh, like, everyone, everyone comes here when we're talking budget, everyone comes here when they're zoning stuff, and then when we're setting, you know, the multi-million dollar budgets, n- nobody's here, nobody's here. Yeah. All right. Okay, okay. All right. Um. I, I want to, um.
Don't talk to them.
I.
All right, you want us to stop? If you're, you're not, this is not your time to talk, I hate to say that. You all can come anytime and listen during the comp opportunity for the people, when you have personal comments. I've tried to be nice about this. Go ahead.
I've got, I've got one more thing to say. Uh, this morning, I, uh, appeared before a Senate Subcommittee on Safety, uh, specifically to talk about, um, Senate Bill, uh, two-twenty-five, which is the Senate's version of House Bill two-twenty-five that bans the school zone, uh, camera tickets. Um, we had a lot of, of folks show up, uh, the author of the bills, um, I was able to, to testify. Um, I, I really think that, that bill's got traction, and we, I would encourage everyone to talk to their, uh, senators, not just Marty Harbin, who's our senator here, but reach out to all the other ones you know. Um, that said, I, I, I wanna make it very clear that we really do have just almost a perfect storm of elected officials here in Spalding County. We have a fantastic DA, we have fantastic judges, both at the state court side and the superior court side. Uh, I, you know, sometimes we don't always disagree, you know, we don't always agree with what the commission does, but we really do have five people that really care. Uh, you know, I've been on boards with folks in the past that got bored and just turned their hearing aids off and stopped listening. And, and that's not, everyone here is, even if we're not looking like it, we're, we're very engaged with what's going on. Um, and, and I wanna make it very clear that we have a fantastic sheriff. I disagree with him on our schools on safety, uh, but I get why he's for the program. It's a tool that the state has given him. It is not his fault that he has that tool, and it's not his fault that he's using it, okay? Uh, we have a fantastic sheriff, I can't say it enough. Uh, it's, it's the state that needs to, to change the way that that tool works. Um, uh, you know, again, not something that you normally hear from defense attorneys, bragging about sheriffs and bragging about district attorneys, but we have an, just a fantastic set of judges, fantastic set of, uh, uh, and there was a bunch of folks that I, that I can't think, so if I'm leaving somebody out, please don't think that I'm insulting them. We really do have a, uh, just almost a perfect storm here in Spalding County, so, um, the last thing I'll say is, let's raise the bar, let's get this done, let's get this done, let's get this done.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all those in favor, please raise your hand.